Ben or Dave, whoever's there for IT land. Will you make sure I'm a co-host on this or whatever you're gonna do?
Doors opening.
Okay, you're the host now.
Thank you.
I thought you were starting, so I've already started recording in your stream.
That's fine. Okay, let us begin. A eleven twenty twenty-two, the Albany County Planning and zoning Commission. Let's do the roll call. Keith Kennedy.
Present.
Our Henning.
I'm here.
Here. Bernique, I'm here and we are missing Jeff Thine, but we have Quorum, so we will proceed. First item on the agenda is the agenda itself. I would make anyone excuse. Do we want to go for a motion to excuse? I'm happy to let that slide, but does somebody want to make a motion to excuse Mr. Thine? Or should we wait to see if he shows up? What's your pleasure?
Kennedy so moved to excuse.
Sir second.
Henning will second.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion to excuse Mr. Thine's absence, please indicate by saying aye.
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 With respect to the agenda, I've got a discussion that I would. Well, invite the commission to participate in when we get to zoning resolution, but it is already on the agenda. So need not be amended. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda coming from the commissioners? Twenty months going twice. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed? I moved to.
Henning will move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Henning moves. Flat seconds. Discussion. Hearing none, again, I think we just do this by voice vote rather than roll call. All in favor say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
An aye for Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the minutes from the April meeting. Just a comment from me that I liked the explanations. Joe or David did a nice job of filling in some of that. Obviously, we can't say everything that happened, but it's good to have a little bit more meat to know whether we want to. Are there amendments, corrections, additions to the minutes from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think on some of the language where there's a motion that's been made, it should read. Commissioner moves or moved commissioner moved and commissioner seconded or seconded by commissioner. And have that consistent throughout the minutes because it is in the past tense.
Okay. Did our clerk understand the God on it? Okay. But you're not suggestively amend these minutes to make that correction.
No, but it's it's somewhat awkward.
Okay, let's.
And there's some there's some difference between several of the motions to the way that it's worded. And it ought to be consistent.
Well, might we make that a motion as those minutes go forward to just clean up the consistency in grammar?
So I move to approve with with that caveat that they that the tense remains consistent throughout the minutes.
Thank you. Are there other suggestions, corrections? For the minutes as distributed? And there's a motion that's relooking for a second. I'll second that. Seconded by Platte. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You, motion carries.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy, what's your point of order?
A point of order? I would much prefer to have a script for the meeting if possible, please.
Okay. Newly noted, I had suggested in the past that the script deviated from the procedure to some extent, but we can bring those into conformity and move forward in the future. Newly noted.
Thank you.
Okay, back to disclosures of Mr. Kennedy.
I I normally mute myself in between so that you don't get to enjoy my puppies, so I'll. Give me a moment to unmute most of the time, thanks.
Okay, did I understand you to make no disclosures?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No disclosures. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nine. You and for me. Okay, this moves us to our public applications. Formally, these are called public hearings. Our procedure will be to hear reports from the staff. To present what they have put in the written report and offer themselves for questioning comments by the commissioners. Then only by comments from the applicant, hopefully will stand for questions as well. Then we'll take public comments on the application. And for public comments, we ask that you state your name and your address, that you stay on topic. There's an opportunity for general comments at the end of the meeting and try to confine yourselves to three minutes to share with us your thoughts. So that we can move forward efficiently. Following the public comments, we'll have discussion amongst commissioners and proceed to a motion as to how we wish to dispose of the application. The first one offered to us today is the Howell Acres subdivision preliminary plat application SD twelve dash twenty-one.
All right, the advocate was the West Coffee Engineering owner Grant Garrett Howell located at Evans Acres Lot Three. Their request is to approve a preliminary plat application. Current zoning is rural residential. There is one residence on the property and lots will be accessed from Strom Road, Evans Lane and Pope Springs Road. There were some reviews. Chelsea Matthews, county assessor, had no concerns. Karen Bowman, senior D I S analyst, had no concern. Jake Snyder, county engineer, had some comments regarding the engineering part report and preliminary plat, but everything has been taken care of. Luke Hawkins, chairman of Aldi County Fire Department One, had no concerns, but recommends the whole water program. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Martin Curry, district manager, believes that this is suitable use for this parcel. He noted that erosion should not be an issue with respect to water runoff on slopes, but wind erosion and weed encroachment on disturbed land may be an issue. Care should be taken to minimize land disturbance. They also encourage rural small land owners. Test their well every three to five years. His full comments can be seen in the review section. Y dot Ryan Shields, district construction engineer, had no comments. And city of Laramie Todd Gieser, assistant manager, recommends approval of this subdivision, but made but made some comments. Full comments can be seen in the review section. Summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water lots will be provided, domestic water from individual wells. Sewer lots will be provided sewer systems by individual systems that will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. Storm drainage was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Snyder, our county engineer. Rocky Mountain Power provides power to the area. Postal service is existing. No new roads are proposed. Road maintenance, this property is within the Pope Springs community, special road improvement district. The new property owners owners will need to pay into the district. Financial assurance for improvements, no financial assurance is required. Fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations, chapter four, section nine. Findings of fact, the information provided in this staff report shall be incorporated as findings of fact. Conclusions of law, the advocate is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. Staff analysis, the preliminary plat complies with the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. This subdivision is being proposed in an area that has been previously developed into a residential community. The lots will be accessed from Strom Road, Evans Lane and Pope Springs Road. The five lots would be similar in size to the surrounding lots. Staff recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat application for the Howell Acres subdivision application. S D one, two, two, one, based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law, S D in the staff report.
Thank you. Let's let the record reflect the arrival of Mr. Thine. Thank you, Jeff. Got started, but happy to have you onboard. Questions for staff? Mr. Kennedy?
None at this time, thank you.
Standing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a handful of questions. Sorry about my pause. Trying to decide where to start. Well, one one low hanging fruit question. In regard to code administration, I'm just thinking about the city's letter and the list of things that they're hoping we can. Have the have the subdivision due. One is to follow code, the twenty twenty-one International Code Council series. And I know our county isn't unique and not requiring code be followed, whereas cities do, but I just wondered. What is the impediment to requiring, you know, to adopting the code that's been adopted by the state in many municipalities? Wouldn't it clean up this problem of of different standards of development as as the city enlarges?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, listening. Albany County has not adopted any code. And therefore, we can't really enforce anything. We would have to to do that through. Mission from. They can administer that, do that in the county. And so we haven't. You know, a lot of it's a financial reason. We'd have to hire additional staff to enforce the code. And currently, I mean, if we tried to. Say that, you know, so and so developer needs to follow. This code, well, there's nobody on staff that's that's burst in the code to be able to enforce that, so.
Right, I guess it grows government pretty quickly to because suddenly you need code inspectors, building inspectors. You know, occupancy, all the different stages, you know, that the city goes through. So so then how how is it possible to accommodate the city's request? In our in our issuing of approval? If unless it's strictly a voluntary measure that that they agree to undertake, is there is that the only way to try to achieve that goal?
I mean, we could suggest that they use some kind of code, but again, who there's no one to. We couldn't enforce anything. I mean, that would be the only. I don't know. I mean, maybe there's other ideas out there, but it's hard to enforce something that we don't. Haven't adopted or haven't bought into yet as a county, if that makes sense.
I get I see what you're saying. You can have a voluntary willing party, but you can't like verify that they're doing what they said. Because that program just isn't in existence in the county.
Correct. Could I just follow up quickly, Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Gertrude said without state permission. What would it take if we did want to adopt a code in the county? Just the county commissioners could do that and then hire the appropriate staff just.
Right, so, you know, I haven't looked into the process very well with with wastewater. We have a delegation agreement with Miami Department Environmental Quality to regulate septic systems. That, you know, for for homes that produce two thousand gallons or less of of upcoming day. I believe it would be some other type of an agreement that would have to be done with the state to take over those types of things. Right now, in the county, commercial development or, you know, public type developed venues and development, they do have to meet code. At the state level, the state fire prevention and electrical safety folks, they're the ones that they do the plan reviews and they do the inspections for fire safety and electrical. So. I, like I said, I don't know for sure what the process is, but I think it would be just asking for permission from the state to do this. I don't think it's a huge process to do that. It's the bigger the bigger deal is is hiring staff and I'm getting the code adopted and then starting that new program. Which, you know, in my opinion, it wouldn't be a bad thing. It's just it costs and we've discussed this in the board of county commissioners. It's never been something they've been interested in since I've been here.
Go ahead, Ms. Hanning.
Thanks, thanks for that discussion. I I wonder if there's a structure, something like that as like within a radius around a metropolitan area, instead of expecting the entire county. To have to have a code program. And you don't have to get updated. Okay, I'm just conjecturizing whether whether there's a way to. I mean, because you do want to protect the homeowner, right? That there that when annexation eventually comes their way, that they're not dealing with a bunch of code updating things. And and so you wonder if you could build a program that was within a radius, then then you're not building a program where people have to go out in the hinterlands to do these inspections. But that you're you're really just trying to smooth the way for growth to be a level playing field, you know, on what people are building right right next door. Anyway, so I guess my my favorite topic to get into, as you guys are well aware, is always the septic tank leach fields and private wells, and I have some questions about that. So first of all, it looks like one of one of the parcels in order in order to make room for another one. The one existing. Home out there has two septic systems, one for the house and one for a separate building. And am I correct that it's just that second one that needs to be abandoned in place? Or is or is it the both of them and the new one needing to be put in? And then the follow up question on that is, will the setbacks be met from the abandoned septic tank leach field system? Like, do you count that in measuring your setback for these neighboring new lots?
Have an applicant question. So we can get to that when they get up.
Okay, sure, yeah, that's fine and dandy. Okay, I guess then maybe most of my questions are just for a discussion later with the with the applicant. Thanks.
I guess, go ahead, Mr. Chair. I guess the one thing I would say about that is there are standards, there are setbacks from wastewater systems. So I think if there's wastewater in place, we'd want a setback from that. I don't know, I we'd have to look at our regulations for the setback standards. I'm not sure what they are.
No, there are setbacks. The question is setback from an abandoned system as opposed to active.
Right, right, that's what I'm not sure.
There being a specific one there. Ms. Hanning, are you? You're saving your questions?
Yeah, I guess I'll I'll, well, I guess I'll just go on the record in a general way, saying I have some misgivings in general about how the Werman nitrate model. calculation is applied in all these instances. And and to me, it makes it it makes it fairly complicated to know how. How to protect the interests of the county. Determining how much more nitrate contamination is okay to keep keep adding. And, you know, you can really play with that equation. In different regards to come out with with pretty different answers, you know. A lot of assumptions go into the the number choices, and I don't know if I always agree with how some of those are selected. So I have some misgivings about that. And also, I guess I I have this feeling, looking at the well construction here, you know, that there's two perforated zones. And, you know, the topmost one probably is where nitrate contamination is coming from this. Was it a the three point seven that was detected in the in the one well that was the data was provided to us? And so you you figure you have some input from that layer that is contaminated from. At least in part from septic tank leach fields. And now you also have this upwelling from the lower perforated section that's that's apparently under confined conditions. And I gotta believe that if you could just sample the top of this aquifer, you get a number that was higher than three point seven. And and so, you know, I guess my suspicion is that we're using a conservative number by using the three point seven in in the Werman nitrate model. And, you know, I think we keep as of late, you know, I'm still only a year and a half into learning how our our commission regulations work. But it seems like we keep seeing some of these subdivision sizes hinge on the Werman model. And and I'm just, as I tune into understanding that more, I'm seeing more and more deficiencies with it. And wondering what the county needs to do to protect our, you know, have have a more. Rigorous decision making around this topic area. And and I guess one general question I have for my counterparts to consider is, you know, do you do you wait for the contamination to be like right bumping against limits or exceeding them before you start requiring? Enhance enhance systems or like should this subdivision have contemplated? An enhanced treatment system as a cluster system that serves all of these lots together? Is that something that gets discussed? Or are we just gonna keep letting the nitrate levels go until until we have a crisis? And so anyway, it's something I struggle with and just wanted to generally put that out there. Thank you.
I guess I'll comment.
Yeah, thank you, and I have some comments later on on that. Go ahead, Joe. So. We rely heavily on D E Q for that, especially have subdivisions larger than three lots. And we've seen letters where they recommend requiring enhanced systems, and this one didn't have that. So I guess we just go by what D E Q tells us, and they gave us a non adverse with nothing to comment on the plat. So that's where we got our recommendation.
Joe, can I can I just follow up with you? Thank thanks for that. I just wondered, so far in my my time, I haven't seen a non adverse finding, but you say that you do sometimes see them come through.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks.
And and I can confirm that. I I play in that pool, have for for decades. D E Q just plays it right down the right down line. If the if the model says ten point one, then you're required to put in enhanced systems. If it's nine point nine, you're not. Their reviews are cursory, is probably charitable, but but that's how they decide adverse, non adverse. Just ten is the number. Okay, questions for staff? Platte?
I just wonder since. Can't require this code be adopted as the city is suggesting. Will we, you. Be forwarding these recommendations to the advocate so that they're at least aware of them and they can choose to as they will.
Yeah, and and this is the preliminary plat. And so we'll we'll send it out again to when the to the city when the file plat comes. And they'll see all of that again, too. You guys will see it all again and and all that. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thine?
Good. My mic's messed up. I'm a little confused on the calculation. And I understand that you guys rely on the state. But when I look at this data about the soil, and I'm referring in particular to table one. On page two of, what is that, the? Chapter twenty-three application or whatever. The soil's ten feet thick there. Am I misreading this information?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
There's specific information on the soil that says that the soil is ten feet thick in this location. And I can't understand how you can possibly treat sewage in ten foot thick soil. And I don't, I'm not. Going to argue with the state on a professional level. Because, you know, that's always a waste of time. But if the soil is really ten feet thick there, you sewage treatment. Proposed is not going to work very well. And I share Commissioner Henning's concern about this constant. If you look at a map of all the water wells that are out there, and assumably, you know, septic tanks with them, obviously in that area. You're just gradually loading up the nitrate. Her comment about three point seven. Is right on the money. Are you gonna wait for ten? Because I will inform you from personal professional experience, when you reach ten, what happens is the EPA steps in, fixes it, and hands the county and city the bill. So I. Am troubled by this. Constant of, and you guys say that occasionally you get negative ten point one results. Calculated levels and things don't go in, but I'm just wondering how this works as a professional scientist, geoscientist who has worked on this problem. Ten feet of soil is not gonna work out when you put five more people's houses there. Because that's what I'm reading. There's ten feet of soil, that's where it's get treated, then we hit bedrock. So am I? Making a mistake in understanding information provided?
Is the applicant's consultant here? I'm just calling.
Yeah, Jared's here.
I'm here.
I mean, would you be in a position to address these guys' questions?
I'm not. My work was more on the drainage and the layout of the lot, so I'm not sure where which document Mr. Thine is referring to.
Let's come back to this with questions.
That would be page one, ten of the four hundred and thirty pages, I believe, or one, eleven. I'm sorry, my computer is having trouble with the document. The agenda that we're handed, and in your case, this is the attachment for, this is the first half of the agenda, basically, that we're sending out. We're sending out huge documents, by the way, guys, that don't. Respond very well to moving through, at least my computer system, so I get hung up in this. But I just read there's ten feet of soil, and then we hit the chug water, which is.
May I apologize? Let's let's be more orderly. Let's go through our staff questions and then let's address.
My staff question is really simple, Mr. Chairman, which is. Are we always going to defer? In this to the state? Is there any? Thought that the county should have? Some capacity to do this? To make these. To make these, these basic calculations and, and judgments on a really important thing because. We're talking about impacting groundwater quality. We're talking about people who build these homes. We're gonna put in wells in those same zones which are in this report said to be. Isolated, which they cannot possibly know based on the data they have. Which zone is isolated, if not both. I'm just saying, there's, there's. Sorry, expressed my frustration with this, but. Are we just always gonna defer to the, this DEQ on this? Yes or no?
Well, comments from staff. Yeah, Mr. Chair. Um, the way that the, our regulations are today and the way the process has always been. Um, that is, that is how we, what we have done. We've. We view um game and fish, we view DEQ, um, we view um Wyoming Department of Transportation. As the experts on those subjects. Um, will it always be that way? Well, it doesn't have to be. Um, I believe if you look at Teton County regulations, which we try not to talk about those here in Albany County. But if you look at those, they've got their own environmental department, basically, that looks a lot of these things. Um, we, we can, we can regulate. Um, as, as long as it's as stringent as state minimums, we can regulate that. If it's above state minimums, we can regulate that. Um. You know, that being said, it's like, you know, the, the skills that are needed to review these worm and models and all of that. That's not your planning staff right now. We don't, we don't have degrees in geology or, or engineering or anything like that. Um. So it would take some, some expertise um to review those. Um, honestly, our, our planning zoning commission's got a lot of expertise in that area right now, you know? Um, it may not always be that way, but right now, we do have expertise. Um, it's voluntary to be on this board, but um. So to answer your question is, is, um, I, I can't answer that question. I don't know if it's gonna be like this forever. I don't know if we'll decide to change that. I mean, that's. That comes down to um what we put forward and um what the Board of County Commissioners does to. Um, effectuate those, those rules or, or whatever we want to put into place. So. I mean, if this is a discussion we wanna have, I mean, this is definitely can have, have this discussion, but it's. You know, this is kinda outside of the application we're looking at at this point.
Thank you.
It weighs water goes through us again separately. But like, separate from the subdivision.
Uh, I understand, gentlemen. Thank you for your answer. I have no further questions of staff at this time.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have some comments, all those comments, those questions. Um. With respect to state codes. She would seem that might be an appropriate thing to take up with the growth area management plan. I'm looking at Mr. Girdge. Is that something that you could carry to them for a recommendation? That would speak to Ms. Hannings' concern that, that up close to the city would be more appropriate to have. Closer coordination of codes. Is, is that something they are looking at or that they could look at?
Oh, absolutely. That is something that they could look at. Um, I mean, they'll be on later today to talk to you, so if those are recommendations that you'd like or comments you'd like to make to them, they would definitely. Review those and um could be part of that.
Oh, I see. That's what Cameron said you called for. Okay, I wasn't sure whether he had presentation or not.
Yep.
All right, well, let's just hold that thought for, for Mr. Glass.
Um.
The other question I had on the city comments. They, we are required by state law to solicit comments on anything within what used to be called the dummy, correct?
Yes.
Are we required to respond and looking at their last paragraph, for example, where they request. That the county respond in writing to their comments. And that that response be part of our discussion, so. Mr. Air is getting up to talk to me about who has to do what to where.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is. Three, four, twelve, one, oh, three is under plating, which is a, a separate uh statutory chapter than. Um, subdivision itself and it reads that. If the city or town is within one mile of the boundary, um. The board shall solicit comments from the governing body of the city or town relating to the impacts, um, so forth. Uh, the board shall consider the city or town's comments that are received by the board at least twenty days prior to the scheduled final consideration of the plat proposal. Um, and shall respond in writing to the city or town about any items of disagreement. Uh, so under statute, that only applies to the board. That does not apply to this commission. Um, and furthermore, there's no statutory established timeline on when that response has to be given. Um, if there are items of disagreement. So that's simply, as they put it. Uh, a request as a matter of professional courtesy.
It would seem that that's appropriate to our considerations. Has a letter been drafted? In some cases, our packet has included a suggested letter, Mr. Girdge.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, not at this time. I, I mean, we'll usually send a letter. Um, after the final plat goes through the process, um, if there's disagreements. Um, that's, that was, that's been the process that we've used. Um, when the final plats went through, we, we've had a letter, um, that went through the process. Um, and then was approved by the board and then sent from the board to the city. Um. But, you know, honestly, whatever we wanna do, if, if, if that's something that we're. You know, you guys want to be involved with preliminary plat stage. Uh, we just follow the statute. We try to make sure we get the minimums and we also try to um allow. You know, be cordial with the city and make sure that we're communicating too, so.
So what was the twenty days business? Uh, that is. Um, that is the requirement that the board shall, okay, so the Board of County Commissioners is required under statute to consider. A city or town's comments so long as those comments are um. Given twenty days prior to the final consideration of the plat proposal.
But the res- the written response, there is no statutory time. And what I've understanding from Mr. Girdge is that that, that is provided after everything's done and the final plat's been approved.
That's what we've done in the past. That's correct.
Okay, I, it would seem to me that. That if we're being asked to consider the city's comments, that we would be interested in hearing. The county's response to those comments as part of our deliberation so that we could recommend appropriately to the board. Is that in, in feasible?
Uh, no, it would just be a matter of figuring out the process to do that. Um. I mean, you know, honestly, if we're, if there's some serious comments the city has. Um, that we wanna consider, we definitely wanna respond to them and then have them, give, give them time probably to respond back, you know? Um, if, if we wanna kind of figure those out, but um. I, I haven't really looked at the process, um, you know, in, in this light. Um, like I said, we follow the statutes and. Make sure that we, we did, trying to respond so that they had, had a response and just didn't leave it naked, so.
So, so we considered them, because we have to, or we, the board. Has to consider the board ask.
The Board of County Commissioners.
And that's, that's reflected somewhere in the proceedings before the board. Is there a checkbox? We considered the city comments? I, I'm not aware of where that happens.
That was the letter that we, I mean, in the past, that's what we've done. We, we've had the letter in there. And then if the board has approved those, that's, you know, that's, that approves. Their consideration of, of those comments and anything that did not mesh with what the city said, we respond back. Uh, to them and say, okay, we considered these and these are the reasons why we did not um decide to follow those. So suggestions.
So if, if close to the board, they would have the benefit of your draft letter to inform their consideration. Is that, no worries?
Yes, that's what we've done in the past, yes. And honestly, that's why we're doing a growth plan, so we'll just come up with an agreement and we won't have to do. One of the reasons.
Yeah. Okay, um, maybe that's a question for the board. Do they, would they like us to look at those? Convey that question forward to see if they would like us to include those, that response. It just seems to me if we're betting this whole thing, we ought to have some information, it's possible. And we could request that.
Or, well, uh, Mr. Chair, please, sorry. Is it that you're recommending sending a response from planning and zoning back to the city?
No, I, I'm simply speculating if, conjecturing, if there was something in the city's letter that really, hey, they've got a point here. We that planning and zoning should have an opportunity to discuss that and, and proceed accordingly?
Well, absolutely. When, when we've done it in the past, we've had it. I think we've, unless we forgot, I think there might have been a time we forgot to put it in the planning and zoning packet, but. We've tried to have that in your packet to, to look at. Past planning and zoning commissions. Um, I, I believe they reviewed them, but most of the time it was just passed on as is. Um, so that being the letter that would go to the board to be approved to go to the. But yeah, I think it's totally appropriate for you to make recommendations on, on the city letter. If there's something like stands out, like. Um, whatever's in this one, I don't know, um, that just really stands out to you. I think that's, that's, that's your job as a planning zoning commission to. To make recommendations to the board to say, hey, you know, they've got a point. Uh, we really should review these things and, you know, somehow make it work, you know? Uh, I, I think that's totally appropriate.
So, so then maybe the question would be couched is, having read the city's letter. What is your response? By way of advising us on if there is something of substance in here, since you haven't provided a written response, we would do this orally where. Treat it like public comment. Here's what these folks are saying. We're, county is obligated to consider that and respond. Is there anything in this letter regarding the whole subdivision that you would wish to bring to our attention?
I, I guess I'll turn that over to Joe. Is there anything in there that felt like?
All Joe's looking at, it's me, I was off my comment. It looks like the, Sid, your four recommendations are under planning, all same perfectly reasonable things to be considered. And this is just recommendations and as David discussed. The other item, code administration, they don't have any ability to enforce that. City says we shall, I mean, they're asking us that, that shall be done. We can't do that. So there is a place where we find some of the fact to say, we can't do that. Or, or we need to, in some ways, you manage around that.
So in a sense, we, we had that consideration earlier with Ms. Hannings' comments. And the response that's being proposed to us by staff is, sorry, can't do.
Right, we just state that we don't have any authority to do that at this point, so. I mean, and, and honestly, when the city sends their letters to, um, we do review them and we'll work with, you know. Those things that we can, we'll work with the applicant to get those changed, like they have some comments about, um, you know. I don't know, layout. Sometimes they, like, well, it doesn't show block number on there or whatever. All those things, we try to work out with the applicant before it even comes to you. So we are trying to respond to what we can in the city letters. Um, and then when it gets to you, there's, there's still those outs, some outstanding things that we have to consider, so.
So, so maybe that question then goes to my colleagues. Is, is there anything in the city letter that could cause you any heartburn beyond what we have discussed?
Well, I'll just say that, yeah, there's, there's first four items to be like recommendations. It's kinda like the fibers are saying, we recommend the whole water program. And, you know, the, the biggie is uh the code, uh, but we, we're in the right here.
Okay, thank you. Right, you look, I just wanna throw a shout out to our county engineer. They did their usual, he did his usual thorough job in this, so, so thanks, Mr. Schneider. The applicant report notes the poor quality of the water and suggests that that is a note on the plat. So my question for staff would be. Is that a problem? Is that a standard way to just warn people? Is there something more? More overt in the way of letting people know that they're unlikely to get respectable water? Tell us about that.
Joe, I mean, that's a, that's the common way that I know of, of telling people in the future is by putting it on the plat.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty typical. Um. I mean, that's one of the things that we don't really regulate as far as the water. If you don't have water, then you're, you're welcome to various system in, in the ground and hauling water, which. There's a lot of rural residents that do that. Um, so. I mean, that, that could change, you know, in future, the future planning and future considerations. If that was something that we ever wanted to deal with. Um, but yeah, at this point, it's like, you put it on the plat, um, people are on notice that way. Um. But other than that, I just, I don't know what other mechanism to, to do that.
We would, we would not reject a subdivision application because there was an inadequate water supply.
We have never done that, but, so. That doesn't mean you can't, but.
Would that be within our authority to do that?
Um. I'm not sure there's anything in our rules. That, you know, we could stick it to. But you could put it in your rules to require, you know, put more water.
Okay, now that, that leads me into my, my final third point, which is on the DEQ recommendation, and it would seem to me. Well, I know for a fact, those are recommendations. And the county commissioners, us as their surrogates or, or previewers, need not follow the DEQ recommendations. So the fact that they say non adverse, I understand is we are free to say, thank you for that. We're marching forward. Is that comport with your understanding?
My understanding of the statute is, is if, if they do an adverse recommendation. That if they do, if we do approve it, we can still approve it, even though there's an adverse uh recommendation. But any, you know, advertising or, um, you know, the plat, all of that has to reflect that. Um, that this is being approved without the, and then on adverse recommendation from DEQ. So I would think that it would work in reverse too, as long as, if it's not adverse and we feel like, okay, well, this is. You know, it'd be nice to have a standard to stick it to, but um. Yeah, again, we have to follow the minimums of the state and then kind of stick to our regulations.
So if we wanted to hold folks to a higher standard and what both commissioners, Hannigan and Ryan are talking about is cumulative impacts. Uh, I think that came up at the big general discussion, DEQ several months ago. Um. One, has there been any feedback from that meeting, any progress on that? Two, would we need our own regulations if we did want to move into that territory and start regulating for cumulative impacts? That, that is two questions there. I guess maybe one may be just through air, it's just supposed to be, but have we heard anything back from DEQ on any of that?
We, we have not had any, heard anything back on, on that subject, no.
So. Could we, do we have authority to say we think the septic system being suggested inadequate? What do you do about it?
I would say as long as we adopt standards and we have our own standards that are above and beyond what the state is requiring me to do that, but I'll defer to.
Mr. Air, we have those.
Correct, correct.
Oh, uh, Dave, those standards would be under our small waste water regulations.
Well, we're talking about subdivisions and they're talking about the werman model and.
Right, I understand that for, you know, the ten. Uh, nitrate levels over actually or whatever that is.
Well, so that's in the state's regulations. Regulations, but the, the regulations for reviewing subdivisions.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not, yeah. Because the, the werman model and that, that modeling is, is for more than one lot, right? Um, when we, our septic regulations look at the specific lot that we're going to install septic on. If that makes sense.
Uh, that's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I would need time to, to look at that.
Feeling, if there's objection from the commission, I would like to get guys to do that. It sounds like it's a recurring topic of interest. Am I correct? That would be congruent with the consensus of the commission. I think that's a fine idea. Sure, Matt needs more work. This, this isn't going away. Now, the whole nature cumulative impacts is they accumulate. So, all right, hearing no objection, maybe put your plate with unspecified timeline, Mr. Kennedy.
I, I think one thing we do need to remember, and I could stand to be corrected, but I do believe under the terms of the delegation agreement, that DEQ has to approve whatever we choose to adopt as well. It's not just a, we want to do this, but DEQ actually has to approve changes to the delegation agreement. So I, this isn't a one and done.
Understand that to be part of our council's assignment, tell us about what we have to do. Does that sound tractable, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a final note on the staff reports, in the, in the past, you gentlemen have offered us alternative forms of the motion. That was not done this time. Kind of speaks to Mr. Kennedy's script. So I guess I would, I would like to see that. It reminds us that if we want to deny something, we need reasons. So just as a.
The subdivision staff reports haven't been updated with the, those wordings.
Okay.
Those are, those other recommendations are on conditional uses and the zoning changes right now. We still haven't finished the subdivision staff reports, so we can add that to the list of updates.
Okay, thank you. Back to the commissioners, other comments for the staff. Hearing none, let's put the applicant on the hot seat.
Good evening.
If there's something you'd like to comment on that you couldn't go by, then we'll see if there's questions for you. Thank you for your attendance.
Yeah. Um, well, I, I guess, um, my first comment to, overall, when it comes to these septic systems, each lot will have to be reviewed and approved by the county and DEQ as individual buildout happens. This is going to be, you know, there will not be a septic system installed without staff, county staff say so. So you'll get a whole other chance to review these, you know, and any proposed septic system before anything goes in the ground. We, you'll be given another chance to look at, you know, take a look at your concerns. You know, percolation test has to be performed, you know, you know, there are more hoops to jump through. This is, you know, for any septic system to go onto these lots. And, you know, they'll be up to, you know, staff's individual discretion at this point and, you know, Wyoming DEQ's review. Would be my first response to these, you know, these concerns, which, you know, they're valid, I understand it. But it's, you know, we'll have a more focused picture on what the septic systems will be doing once we have actual septic systems proposed. If that, if that, hopefully that can, I don't know, give you peace of mind or anything, but.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's do a round robin of questions for the applicant. Mr. Kennedy?
None now, but I, I may have one here in the future.
Feel free to speak up. Ms. Hanning?
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Ralph. I know that you've been having to sit and listen through a lot of conversation and, and, so, well, one question I had originally was about the, the two septic tank leach fields out there. And is the plan to abandon both or just the, the one that was for the workshop?
Just the one that was for the workshop and mostly because that one does not, would not meet setback requirements for the new, for the new lot lines. So that one's being abandoned specifically for that reason. And then, again, you know, we'd have to, if they want, if, moving forward, they'd like to replace the septic system, it would be up for review and approval by the county in Wyoming.
Okay, so, so regarding the system that has to be abandoned, it sounds like, you know, my concern about setbacks from, I guess, you know, a pre-existing waste source that's just not receiving any more input. But it's still a waste source that I think has to be thought about in terms of setbacks. And I don't get worried about the setback to the property line. And it sounds like it wouldn't make that, but tell me about the setback to future wells and, and to fit everything in out there with their septic systems and leach fields.
Well, again, that would have to be individually submitted and reviewed as, you know, either each lot was sold or if the owners of the existing house want to reconfigure things. I think currently, everything else meets standards. It was, that was the problem, septic system, just because it's between the existing workshop and, you know, dwellings. And on the north side is a horse corral. And they're separating the horse corral from the, the actual residence. So that was, that was, you know, a preliminary consideration that we had to make was that, okay, you know, the house septic system meets all the setbacks, the well is still okay. But if we add this line, you know, dividing, this, this dividing property line, this septic system is no longer, no longer meets code, so we'll have to abandon it, just for this process.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess I, I need to backtrack and say that it's not up to me whether or not I care or not about the setback being met for the property line. It's, it's up to the planning about whether it meets code. And I, I just myself have not run into a discussion in the, in the zoning resolution that talks about setbacks from pre-existing but abandoned systems. So, so I shouldn't say I don't care. I should say I don't know whether I should care. But anyway, I know David and Joe are looking at stuff like that and we have time to think about that before the next, the next phase of development. And I guess we talked already about the Werman calculation and I know that wasn't out of your shop. You know, so it wasn't, it wasn't your, your calculation to sit here and defend. So there's really not much I'm expecting you to, to say about that one. I do wonder in, in, from the county's perspective, whether that's something Jake can, the county engineer can add to their list of what they looked at in these applications. But anyway, it sounds like that's a bigger discussion, trying to figure out a way to get consistency on, on some of these inputs to the model. So I guess that's all I, that's all I have. Thanks for your, your patience and your, your answers.
Of course.
Well, I just echo what Mr. Hanning said. Thanks for your patience and taking our comments. I don't have any question myself.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Mr. Vine?
Uh, no questions at this point.
Okay, I, something you said a lot about, and I, again, don't expect Mr. Ralph to be able to answer these, but for the record, looking at the applicant's analysis of potential impacts groundwater, I have several issues with that analysis. One being the statement that water levels in these wells lies significantly above the production intervals indicating the water bearing straight up are growing. Find that is incorrect. Or importantly, when I see a hydraulic conductivity of the aquifer taken from the percolation tests, I object. That's scientifically completely unsound. Internal reviews in DEQ have flagged that in the past, but that's simply, there's no justification for that. If that, if the appropriate applicant's consultant were here, we could have that discussion, but let me just put that on the record. Similarly, when the two-year type travel is calculated, and appropriate hydraulic conductivity needs to be used, and the report says they use the slowest possible rate, which obviously generates the shortest possible travel time. So I think that the analysis of impacts groundwater is technically flawed and inadequate for us to make a decision. The non-adverse opinion of DEQ notwithstanding on, on this project. So, as I say, for the record, it would decide how that affects our vote going forward. Mr. Ralph, I don't expect you to have anything to respond to there, but you're welcome to give it a shot.
Well, yeah, you're right. That was not a report that came out of our office. However, I will counter with, you know, the point I made before where staff will be, you know, DEQ will be able to take a closer look at these reports as the individual lots build out. So, you know, going back to a point that was made earlier, that we could, you know, note on the plat that there might be conditions that require, you know, individual developers bring in a cistern or that, you know, we, we market for that, you know, sort of risk, I think, could, on the, on the final plat, I think it, uh, you know, maybe provide peace of mind for you and, you know, help, you know, push the plat forward while making sure that we're, you know, addressing all these concerns.
Thank you for that, that response, but I can't help but point out that the, as was discussed earlier, the permitting of individual septic systems is entirely that septic system. And the only question that is asked of the county engineer is whether this system will successfully introduce the asphalt into the ground and it'll stay there. There's, there's a hint of cumulative impacts. Those are captured on the scale of the subdivision within that Werman model. And then they are not captured at all at the scale of multiple subdivisions. So let me ricochet that question, grasp back to staff. I'm inclined to deny the preliminary plat based on the inadequacy of the consideration of groundwater contamination. Now, will we get another bite at that apple at the final stage? Would it be appropriate to move forward despite that concern?
Um, you know, if we have questions about that, I think this is the stage to kind of figure that out. Final plat is typically, not that you couldn't use it to, you know, at the final plat stage, but, I mean, I mean, really, if there's just things you want to, want to recommend that they do before the final plat, this is, I mean, we can do that here too.
So my, my, my statement would be that, that the applicant has not given us sufficient information to assess the impact on groundwater quality. Okay, now, I, I can't redo their calculations for them on the spot and present it to my colleagues, but that's the deficiency I see in the application as being presented as for decision. So what I'm taking your advice to is that if, if a majority of the commission felt that way, we would reject the application at this stage. Harris wants to. Um, at, at this stage with the preliminary plat and this preliminary view, you could also ask the applicant if they would be willing to come back at our next month's meeting and be able to provide that additional information. So, so you could table it. Oh, yeah, no, you could table it or could we make a condition of approval of the preliminary plat and condition of satisfactory address to groundwater quality concerns?
Yes.
That would be appropriate.
That would be what I would suggest, yeah.
That's, no, that's, that's satisfy my concerns.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of that, if I could get a written, you know, a written statement essentially to the effect of your concerns and I could pass it on to our environmental engineer and hopefully we can come back, resubmit and come back with something more satisfactory.
Yeah, let's, let's see what the commission wants to build, because it may be that we'll just proceed without that condition. I will lobby for that. But if that, if that condition is accepted, I would be happy to work with anybody to have my concerns addressed. I, I don't know that I like the idea that you haven't jumped to my tune, but to some extent, if the commission were on board with that, does that sound copacetic? I'm looking at Mr. Harris and Mr. Gertz that I would can represent that concern? Please. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that would be appropriate if you were through a motion of the board to write out a list of the concerns. Okay, thank you. Back to the commission, other comments, thoughts you want to bring in at this point before we move to public comments? Ms. Hanning?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. In, in the event, I just, I was just looking at the subdivision regulations, planning and subdivision regulations and the, the basis for our approval. And I'm just wondering how, what we can do with this paragraph M. Like if we, if we table this and then ask for additional information under this paragraph M, or in the bigger picture, if we can broaden what the county uses as a written application to include more information, because we can, under paragraph M, to, to get more information about aquifer protection beyond DEQ chapter 23. So I'm just wondering about chapter M. I'll, I'll read it. Any other information consistent with the subdivision resolution and the board's published rules and regulations, which the board deems pertinent or relevant to the evaluation of the application. So it's, it sounds like we have consistently information that we're wishing we saw that would make it our, our evaluation of the application more pertinent and relevant. And I'm just wondering what, what, if anything, we could do through that avenue. But I, I just echo what I, what I'm hearing about the concerns of this particular calculation of, of either tabling it for the next meeting or finding a conditional way to move it on. But seems like if, if, if it could result in a finding of, of the opposite, sorry, my words are lost. It seems like the sub divider, I would want to know that at this stage, like David kind of alluded, like this is sort of the step to figure this out. And so anyway, I, I'm just wondering about tabling it mostly. Thanks.
Yeah, all right. We'll, we'll get to our recommendation in a moment, but good, good thoughts. Further questions for the applicant, comments from the applicant? Okay, let's look for public comments. Is there anyone on the call or in the room that would like to comment on the Powellacre subdivision? Being hearing none, we'll close that with, I guess there is a public comment that was submitted in writing by Ms. Till. Would the staff respond to those concerns? Thoughts on her concern that, that are we able to, my thought was we can't help her, but I'd like to hear from you guys.
I agree. No, um, yeah, um, we don't require studies on the amount of water that's underground and what's, what's available. We do rely on the state for that too. I don't, I don't know how much they look, I do know they do monitoring and those types of things. And so that's, that's really not, I don't know. The city and the university use a lot more water than a few wells under residential lots, so that's, you know, all I would say.
They do, and I would offer there are provisions in state water law for when people's their water ran has been properly interfered with to file a complaint. And that is handled by the state engineer's office. So hearing no more public comments, what's the commission's pleasure to dispose of this, to address this applicant? So, uh, hearing no more public comments, uh, what's the commission's pleasure to dispose of this, to address this applicant? We're open discussion now. Mr. Chair, I, I like your idea of including this board with your condition. All right, let, we'll, let's, let's play with that for a moment. And then we'll put the actual word student to satisfy our, our legal counsel. Uh, it sounds to me like we've got two suggestions floating around. One, table it. Pending resolution of some of these lingering concerns, another option would be to approve it, um, conditioned upon those being satisfactorily addressed.
And I'm suggesting we approve this preliminary plat last thing.
Well, all right, let's, let's make that a, a motion. If we got the words for it. Let's have a report. I have to go over a couple of the pages. Although this is, this, we often duplicated these in the script, maybe that was each, right? I thought it was reflected, Mr. Kennedy had suggested, maybe not.
So the wording would probably be something like.
I'll still get to it.
Yeah, recommended approval of preliminary plat application for the Hell Acres subdivision application. SD dash one, two, dash two, one, based upon incorporating the finest plaque to conclusions of laws, state and staff report. With the condition that, what are you on instead? I don't know. Commissioned concerns
regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to groundwater quality be addressed. And that concern will be put in writing. And those concerns will be put in writing.
By the chair.
Yeah. Is that a coherent motion?
By the chair.
Is that?
Yes.
I'll second that. On your votes. You can't second it, it's your motion.
Sure.
All right, are we satisfied that we have a coherent motion on the floor without making Mr. Platt balance a biscuit on the other's nose? Is there a second for that motion?
Heard he will second.
Okay, that motion is up for discussion. Yes, the, the the argument against it would be is tabling a more appropriate way to proceed. I, I'm agnostic about that question. Do other commissioners have an opinion of how they wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I have. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Ralph's position and he's walked into a situation out of his own making. And he's done a really good job presenting for his client. To summarize the question briefly, we, and I do not know, this is, this is a little beyond my knowledge of our writ and also behind, beyond what I know of the county planning staff, the details of what they do and don't do. I, I think they do a good job. I'll say all that ahead of time. My concern is very simple. Currently, the nitrate level in the area is approximately four parts per million. The maximum contaminant limit for nitrate is 10. The word maximum is important for the county and ourselves as commissioners, planning commissioners to consider. According to the calculations provided by DEQ, it will go up to about six and a half. This is one subdivision, five homes going in here. That's the estimate. 3.7, the current level out there compares to levels of less than one prior to development in the county. And I'm happy to provide the information later in the conversation, in a larger sense in the county. It is, now, the county staff has noted, this particular commission has a great deal of expertise. Future ones will not necessarily. I call your attention to the submission and exhibit of the, uh, number of wells out there. We're at 3.7. Adding five more wells will take us half the way to a level that will require the state and the county to respond with expense of, I assume, um, having future homeowners provide any septic systems. We are, through no making of our own, at a regular, a precarious position. If we grant Mr. Ralph's, not Mr. Ralph, but the, the particular owner here, they could be the last one in, or they second to the last one there, or they third to the last one. Because we're looking at development out there on this level of shrinking down these lots. Clearly, based on the information we're given today, we will very rapidly reach the level where we will exceed 10 and not be able to develop out there. Um, I'm inclined personally to table this because I think there's a larger concern here that, that's coming up that has been avoided for a long time, but I am somewhat new. This is my first few meetings in this position and I don't know as a, as a newbie, as being commissioner, is this something we're supposed to pay attention to? Because, and I, and I, and I refer people, you know, back to figure four for the house subdivision permitted water wells. You put five more in, are we going to get the next one to 10? We get the next one to 15, next one? You know, when does this cut off and are we supposed to speak to this? I have nothing to say about the presentation of this particular subdivision. It appears they've met all the basic requirements. Uh, my support in tabling it is, are we going to take up the larger question or not? If not, then we will shortly, um, reach the larger question when the next few subdivisions go in and the calculation, the D, magic calculation DEQ uses will exceed 10 because the background's so high, guys. That's what I'm saying. This ain't magic. You're dumping this stuff into the aquifer uh, or into the shallow groundwater. And eventually the concentration will build up to the point where the model will produce the 10. And then we'll have to stop. We will be able to stop. We will be justified in stopping granting permits for subdivisions up there. And I don't know that that's where, where the county wants to go. So that's the end of my comment. I think it's a large scale comment.
Motion before us needs to be addressed. I would take your comments, Mr. Thine, to be a vote no on the, on the motion and bring another one back.
Yeah, correct. The current, it, it, as it currently stands, I would have to vote no and ask to come back and say table this application until such time as we have clarification on where our role is.
Other commissioners' comments on the motion? Just, yeah, okay, Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything? Just to, everybody there?
Laura had her hand up.
Thanks. I'm just hesitant because it's to talk more about tabling, which isn't part of this motion. So I'm not sure if I should go on about the tabling idea other than to ask for clarification, I guess, from David that, so there's a limit to how long you can table something, right? You, you don't get to table it indefinitely while you try to solve the world's problem with nitrate. Like we're, we, this is a global issue that we're trying to address. I mean, it, global in terms of what keeps coming in front of us, but it's also a global problem. And so what, how long are you allowed to table something? Because I have a feeling what Mr. Tine is talking about would take more time to accomplish than we have when we table something. Isn't there a time limit on tabling?
Do we have an answer for that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Um, it's 45 days, um, from receipt of the application to when, uh, the planning zoning either has to make a decision or it's deemed approved.
Okay, so if, if one found it simply inadequate, it would, the decision would have to be to deny.
Deny or approve condition.
Okay, thank you. I guess my comment is I'm reluctant to, to saddle this applicant with this much larger issue that we're all trying to. We wouldn't normally take comments from our applicant at this point, but Mr. Ralph, did you have something to, it's actually our applicant in the room. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, he's here. Okay. Very, yeah, quickly.
Uh, quickly, just as a point of clarification, uh, one well is already existing. It would just be an addition of four walls.
Okay, yeah, thank you, understood. Okay, further thoughts on Mr. Platt's motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
While those are, are valid global concerns, I think we also need to remember that this is a specific application in time and, and the DEQ recommendation holds a great deal of professional weight. So I would, I would tend to approve with those conditions, uh, that had been attached to the motion.
Their comments before we bring that to a vote. Ms. Hanning?
Um, I, I just would comment that to approve with these conditions would be consistent with how we are proceeding of the, the Cotton Tail subdivision, right? That we, we approved to allow that to move forward while we, um, did our, did research on how DEQ did their calculation. So I, I see this as being a consistent move with that decision.
Um, all right. Are there other comments? If not, we'll bring this to a vote. Mr. Kennedy?
I.
Hanning?
I.
What? I. Thine?
Nay.
Uh, pinkly chair votes I. Motion passes. So just to finish that up, um, I will draft something and distribute it. Can I do that? So that I know that, I, I mean, I can't because it's not in a meeting yet, so. All right, you, you, I'll give it, I'll coordinate with staff and Mr. Ayers. Um, it's the best I can do. And hope, hope you're all satisfied with the results. Um, all right, moving right along.
The Heinz Bar subdivision preliminary plat application, STO two, twenty-two, two, well. All right, the applicant and owner is Galen Heinz Bar, located at two fourteen North Fork Road. Uh, the request is to approve a preliminary plat application. Current zoning is rural residential. There is one residence on the property. There were some reviews. Chelsea Matthews, county assessor, had no concerns. Karen Bowman, senior GIS analyst, had no concerns. Gina Meagari, real estate supervisor, had no concerns. Jake Schneider, county engineer, had some comments regarding engineering for preliminary plat, but everything's been taken care of. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Martin Curry, district manager, believes that this is suitable use for the parcel. He noted that erosion should not be an issue with respect to water runoff on slopes, but when erosion, weed encroachment and on disturbed land may be an issue. Uh, care should be taken to minimize land disturbance. They also encourage rural, small acreland owners test their well every three to five years. His full comments can be seen in the review section. And YDOT, uh, district, uh, construction engineer, Ryan Shields, had no comments. Summary of subdivision permitting requirements. Um, water lots will be provided, domestic water from individual wells. Lots will be provided sewage systems by individual systems that will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. A storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Schneider, county engineer, rough enough power provides power to the area. Postal service is existing. Uh, no new roads are proposed. Road maintenance, the applicant will either need to come up with their own road maintenance agreement or join the existing one that is currently taking care of the roads. Financial assurance for improvements, uh, is not required. Fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations, chapter four, section nine. There was a variance request, the applicant requesting a variance for the Albany County Subdivision Regulations. Chapter four, section six, A two, the small subdivision process shall not apply if any of the following conditions exist. The subdivision will be created within a previously planned subdivision and from chapter five, section one, B eight, copy of all information submitted to and approved by the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, the Wyoming State Engineers Offices, and Laramie Rivers Conservation District. Finding to that, the information provided in the staff report shall be incorporated as findings of fact. Inclusions of law, the applicant is not proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations with the current application. Staff analysis, the preliminary plat complies with Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations. This subdivision is being proposed in North Fork subdivision of Centennial. The lots would be accessed from North Fork Road and East North Fork Road. Staff recommendation, um, is to deny the variance request due to this request attempting to avoid county regulation and no hardship being present other than the county regulations that are in place. Staff recommends tabling the preliminary plat application for the Heinz Bar subdivision application, ST zero two, 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 until the required WDEQ review is complete.
Thank you. And I neglected to point out that, uh, those who are appearing, make public comments, you're welcome to leave, so. If you guys don't want to hang out for the rest of our. Okay, uh, questions for staff? Mr. Kennedy?
My question is, has the applicant expressed a reason that they have requested the variance or, or any reason for that?
Yeah, so their variance request is in the packet. Let me find it. And Garrett's also their representative, so he may know right off the bat, but there is about a two-page, um, letter in the packet. It's right before the review start, if you wanted to look at that.
Well, and, and that was why I asked the question because I had seen that. And of particular concern to me is, uh, along with everything else, avoiding the state engineer seems to be an issue for the availability of, of water later on. And having spent most of the day on listening to the select water committee today, it came to the forefront of my mind.
Further discussion of that item?
I'll be happy to ask the applicant about that in a moment. Thanks.
Is, is, is that what you, are you done, Mr. Kennedy? Further questions, Mr. Kennedy?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think I just have one s- small question. Um, okay, so this is rural residential and one of the lots will remain eight acres. And I'm just wondering, uh, is, down the line, could the eight acres be further subdivided so that, I, I can't remember what the minimum lot size is required in rural residential. Um, so, but I'm just curious, can that eight acres go down any, be, be subdivided any further without a zoning change?
Rural residential's minimum is five acres, so no, that one cannot.
Oh, somehow I thought there was a two in there somewhere with like the average or, oh, okay, that just goes straight into small lot. Okay, well, then I guess it can't be subdivided further. Um.
Your average is five, right?
Right.
Yes.
But that, would that, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
What? Questions for staff? I, when I looked at this, I went, I wondered basically the same thing that Mr. Kennedy brought up, which, Mr. Gray brought up, which is what was the hardship or what was the extraordinary circumpass? That's a case of variance.
That's our opinion, too, is that there wasn't one other than our.
That is your firm opinion?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's my question. Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions at this time.
My comment on staff report is if we are to accept your recommendation for denial. I've been sensitized to findings. Do we feel that the findings listed are adequate to justify a, a denial at this time? Or might we attach Mr. Schneider's letter as a finding?
So, so, yeah, Mr. Chair, we're not asked, or the, the recommendation isn't to deny the application. The recommendation is to table the application until they've provided all the requirements necessary to, to go forth. It's incomplete at this point. And that's what they're asking for the variance for, because they're saying they do not want to do the DEQ report, state engineer stuff or whatever. They don't want to do that. And they're asking for a variance from that, so. I guess our, isn't that our perspective is like, we're really just asking you to table the application so they get the rest of the, of the information, but they have the right to ask for a variance as well.
But you want to deny the variance?
We want to deny the variance.
Then I'll just rephrase my question. Do we need to list findings appropriate to deny the variance?
I, I mean, you have to list your, your reason, which your reason would be is, is they have not provided compelling reasons to grant the variance.
Okay, all right. Looking over your shoulder, Mr. Harris, do you agree with that, so that we have a founded decision here, I'd like to go along with staffs or? All right, yes, Mr. Chair, there is no required bindings for denial of variance. There certainly is for granting a variance, you have to grant that in writing, or the board does rather. But as general best practices, giving a moderately detailed reason for the denial would be appropriate. And is it your opinion that the letter drafted by Mr. Schneider, Schneider is adequate to meet that threshold? He explains with some detail why a variance is not appropriate.
Can you refer me to exactly where that letter is?
Yep, I got it right here. Is that a fair characterization of that I'm asking, Mr. Gurch? Jake, pretty well, what is it about?
Yeah. I think that would be sufficient.
Thank you. All right, other questions for staff? Hearing none, would the applicant like to address this?
Yeah, I'm still here for, on behalf of the applicant for engineering reasons, so. I can, I guess I'll address our initial variances that, our initial request for variance is that, you know, we're submitting this as a small subdivision. And the, really the only reason that we the only reason that we would require a variance for this is beca- because of it being an existing subdivision. Our, but our logic for requesting this variance is that this lot, the existing lot is just under 14 acres large. When you look at the surrounding lots and other lots in this North Fork subdivision, they're a lot closer to five acres. So the way we see it is by subdividing this lot, we're bringing this property, you know, more to better reflect what's already existing out there. You know, these five acre lots, five acre rural residential lots are acceptable for the rest of North Fork subdivision. And we're actually just taking, you know, what you could see as an outlier, a gigantic lot, and shrinking it down and bringing it into, you know, closer to closer to matching their neighbors, so to speak. And for that, you know, and per county, per the county regulate subdivision regulations and Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality is not required for a small subdivision application. So that's, that's our string of logic with regards to the variance and, you know, the way the submittal is the way it is.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Kennedy?
Was this a, originally a platted subdivision, or was this done prior to there being a final plat? In other words, this was just done by survey prior to our, any subdivision regulations in the county?
Um, the, the existing, I'm, just for clarification, the existing North Fork subdivision, is that what you're referring to?
That's correct.
Let me look here, I have the GIS map pulled up, I can probably pull a date here for you. Here we go.
It's not a meat and bounds.
Mr. Gurch is faring us that this is within a platted subdivision?
Yeah, this is in, within the platted subdivision of, of North Fork, so.
Okay. Thank you. And no further questions?
Questions for the applicant?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't have any.
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Nothing, nothing for me, thank you. Are there public comments to be considered? Now, ta-da-da, thank you for your patience.
Good night. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dan Colgan. 135 East North Fork Road. I'm on the board of the association up there. And our concern was sent in with a letter by our, our Del, who does kind of the legal side of things. And we're concerned about access to our road structure. And this lot does not have an agreement or connection to our main subdivision. And so, what we're saying is if it gets divided, we'd appreciate if there was some control on Heinz Bar being, and any future owner of these lots have to be part of our association and pay for our roads. And that's the main thing that we wanted to communicate. And I'm not sure I understand everything that's going on here. So, do, do I hear your denial of this application? Is there some reason, I guess I can take back and explain?
The recommendation from staff was that we denied the variance, which forces it to go through the full process. So, I guess I shouldn't paraphrase. Mr. Gurch, did you address that? My understanding is that you have not a specific objection to it occurring. We just wanted to go through the full process.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the application hasn't been completed as the way you need it to be.
That, that would be the recommendation from staff?
Sure, okay.
Thank, thank you. Could I direct part of that question to staff? This isn't a legal road access issue, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, they have easements and access the road.
So, to failure to adequately provide for the maintenance of the road is not a reason for us to reject the application. That will be forward here, but interpreting the.
So, Mr. Chair, do you want to answer it, Joe? Okay, so, um, so what's going on here is, you know, the, the, what, what is being presented from the North Fork subdivision association or whatever it's called, is, is that there's kind of a, an agreement up there and on, I think on deeds, there's some covenants that there's, there's maintenance of the road that's supposed to be happening. One of the provisions of the regulations is to work with those that maintain the road to come up with an agreement, so. So that would be something that we need to do. However, that's not required until the final plat stage. So at this stage, that's not an issue. We do want to make sure that we address the concerns that are being brought up here. And, and I think that can be done, it's just, we might have to work with the county attorney's office to see what kind of document that needs to be filed or, or, or come up with, but but, but that's something that we'll need to, need to address because there is kind of a organization that's, that is maintaining it and their applicant is required to negotiate or deal with those that maintain the road because they'll be using the road as well.
I mean, I don't think it's going to be a problem. I mean, I, I'm kind of making some assumptions here, it sounds like Mr. Heinz Bar, Heinz Bars have always worked well with these folks, so.
Good neighbor. And he has, in the lot that he has, he's paid his dues and he has supported the situation. It's just that when this divides, the future goes on and, you know, 10 years apart or whatever, here we are without protection for the road, so, thank you. It's ongoing and we'll see what happens.
As far as what Mr. Colgan can take back to his group, it sounds like that's a final plat. That is submitted more important to file, but?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it will be dealt with.
Okay. I would just note for the record that we also had a comment from Eric and Arvin Gregory. And they are not here to represent their concerns, but we didn't, we didn't see those. Great further public comment? Hearing none? Commission, discussion, comments, motion to proceed, but your pleasure. And, and then I guess first question, do we need to do two pieces, the variance and the preliminary plat? All right, so let's talk about the variance. How do we want to dispose of the request for variance?
Mr. Chair. I propose I'm not quite sure how the language goes, as you said. But I propose we follow staff recommendation on the variance.
Well, how about a motion to deny the variance request?
And I thank you for phrasing that correctly for me, Mark.
What is your motion?
That, that is my motion.
You got it?
I'll get better, guys, I promise.
Okay, fine. Is there a second to that? I will second that motion. Seconded by Mr. Platt, discussion by commissioners. What's going twice?
As Chairman, I believe it should incorporate those, the, the findings from the county engineer.
That's sensible, but will the movement accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And a second? Absolutely. Okay, the motion as it stands is to deny the request for variance including the findings expressed by the May 5 letter of Mr. See that right? What was the date of this letter? I guess March 24, 2022, letter from County Attorney Schneider. Right. Does our clerk have sufficient information? Yeah, have the motion. Yeah, no, all the commissioners understand the motion, I'll be for them. Further comments? Seeing none. Mr. Kennedy, how do you vote?
I.
Hanning?
I.
What? I.
Diane? I.
Pinkly, I. Variance request is denied. How do we wish to dispose of the application?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the application until we've received a appropriate response to the denial of the variance.
I second the motion.
You would go second. Mr. Harris, would you like to speak to the form of the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If we could, I suppose incorporate until the time as the applicant brings back a amendment or an application in compliance with the applicable subdivision regulations.
So we, we have a, a time stated in the motion. We, we are moving to table a motion until such time as the applicant provides a complete application.
Yes.
Is that, is correct motion, Mr. Kennedy? It's your motion?
That is what I intended, thank you.
Okay. And that was seconded, and Ms. Hanning, do you have some discussion?
I'm just wondering again about the, the time limit. So if, if they don't come back to us with Chapter 23 information within the 45 days, does this become automatically approved? Or does that wording of the conditions of Mr. Harris protect us from that eventuality?
Uh, yes, thank you, Ms. Hanning. I actually, I slightly misspoke earlier. The 45 days for planning and zoning starts to, the timer kicks on. Once the DEQ report is due or the DEQ report is submitted, the earlier of the two. So since there has been no DEQ report even, I guess, processed yet, then that clock has not begun whatsoever.
Thanks, that's, that's my only question, thank you so much.
Further discussion of the motion? Seeing none. Kennedy, how do you vote?
I.
Hanning?
I.
What? I. Diane?
I.
Pinkly, I. Thank you. Motion is carried. That closes our public hearing portion, and we're moving on to current planning projects. Mr. Colgan, you're welcome to stick around or not, as you.
All right. I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your use, gentlemen.
Good evening, what's left of the period.
Appreciate your concern in bringing that to us. Okay.
Have a safe drive back to Centennial.
Indeed.
Okay, I didn't realize that we were going to have a presentation, but fortunately, Mr. Gloss, you're first on the remaining agenda, the growth area management plan.
It was, Mr. Chair, I'll just introduce, we have Cameron Gloss on with us, he's from Logan Simpson. He, they represent the firm that was, is doing the work on the, the growth area management plan that the city and the county are working on together. And he's, he's really helping us a lot with this and things so far. I think I'll just turn it over to Cameron to, to give his presentation. And Cameron, I made you a co, so if you'd like to try, you know, doing the, the presentation on, on your screen, if not, I can do it online as well, so.
Let me just add that Cameron's been in the community doing interviews, I've heard good feedback from those that he has, he has interrogated, so. Go ahead.
Well, that's a nice introduction to talk about the manner in which we approach our conversations. We try to be a, a little nicer, I think, than using that term, but it's been really enjoyable over the last month, working with a, a lot of different representative interests in Laramie. And it's kind of, it's been a great project for us as a firm. We've enjoyed this collaborative effort between the county and the city. I'm going to, real quick, as I'm speaking, I'm going to go ahead and see if I can go ahead and share my screen. So are you seeing the presentation yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. So I think the, the last hour and a half have been illustrative of some of the challenges that the community faces with growth within this area surrounding the Laramie, the city of Laramie. I'm just going to go over some very basic agenda tonight. More than anything, just to let you know, our sincere interest in our team to be representative of the values of the community. Logan Simpson, our firm's got five different offices, but the main planning offices in Fort Collins. We work throughout the Rocky Mountain West. And we're very fortunate to have a partner in StanTech. You might know that the OqFer Protection Plan Update is being developed by StanTech as well. Couple members of their staff that are both in Wyoming are, are helping do the utility analysis. And I think it really underscores this discussion about utility service, whether it's water, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, other urban services. And then we have a, a financial analysis that we'll be doing as part of the project. And the firm is Tishler Vice. They, they do physical modeling and the, the idea here is to understand. Uh, they, they do physical modeling, and the, the idea here is to understand, what are the costs of growth? What's the most efficient way for the county and city to, to provide those urban services over time? And then lastly, we have a, a, a legal counsel, as we get into discussions about the code, discussions about a potential intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city, that we would bring them in to make certain we're compliant with state law. So, here's that donut you were just talking about, the, the area around Laramie. It's kind of a, a purple color shown. Um, and you see these numbers, we're, we're kind of trying to figure out what's the, the best way to represent, um, the various areas that people associate with, sort of that, that eastern area where you have the Aquifer protection area, uh, areas to the south, uh, and then to the north, and then, uh, lastly, you know, the, the west side. So, you know, the, these are, I think, pretty approachable geographic locations for people in the community to understand as we go out there. So, um, I think, as is mentioned, this, this one mile area, it's, it's shown as actually an urban growth area um, in the, uh, the, the city's comprehensive plan, but it, it's really mandated by the state. It's dictated by, I think, kind of an arbitrary dimension of one mile. During this planning process, we'd like to look at that and see if maybe there's a way to, uh, more appropriately discuss where urban growth should happen. Um, outside of Laramie, maybe this, this boundary could shrink in some areas, maybe it, it actually expands in others. So, um, we also have been collecting information, um, about, yeah, you know, a series of different attributes. So when you think about, um, utility service, that's a big part of the analysis, other services like fire and emergency medical. And then we'll, we'll get into, uh, some of those constraints, things like steep slopes, uh, wetlands, flood plains and high hazard floodways, those are all really critical pieces. And then trying to understand from the, the values of the community and what property owner interests have. Uh, we, we've been sort of plotting where developments have been proposed, where they've been approved. Maybe somebody had contemplated a project years ago and it never got off the ground. All of that is being mapped and considered. So we'll, we'll come up with a, a very detailed analysis of opportunities and constraints. And then, um, eventually, we'll get back to the community on what eventually would be, uh, an agreement on a growth plan. So this is our, our project timeline, uh, four distinct phases. I think the first two are where a lot of the, the, frankly, the effort goes, particularly phase two. So, uh, we've been at it for, you know, coming up a couple months now, collecting information, doing some analysis, initial work, looking at various policy documents and entitlement plans that have been approved. And then, uh, having these stakeholder interviews, as was mentioned, and then we go into the, kind of the meat of this is phase two. So we'll, uh, be analyzing in greater depth, some of the data that we've got, and then coming up some, with some different scenarios. And options for growth that the community can consider, and then ultimately coming up with a preferred growth, uh, uh, plan that would, um, be then reflected as we get into the third phase and the fourth phase, which would be maybe some changes to your regulations, uh, and the policies and the way that the city and the county work together to ensure that the growth is, um, is really what the, the community prefers within this, this area. So if you look at this timeframe, it's pretty fast. In fact, it's very fast, compared to what we're, you know, typically accustomed to, which would be, this be a, a month, a fif- uh, one year to 15 month, uh, process. And we're, you know, really kind of about six months here, so, so pretty quick. I think we'll have a lot of, uh, information to you and to the community by the end of July, uh, that, uh, would, you know, hopefully reflect what people prefer in terms of their values. So, i- in this first phase, uh, we, we did a field tour, it was one of the first things. We, uh, had a city-county staff, our, our team, we went around and, uh, looked at the various sites within this, uh, joint growth area. As I mentioned, uh, we also have been collecting all sorts of data, and then, uh, maybe most importantly, uh, have created a public involvement plan. So, uh, during the next six to eight weeks, uh, you're going to see us a lot. And that would be reflected in, uh, some events that we'll talk about here in a second. But our public involvement plan is, um, really intended to saturate, or to the area in terms of our engagement with citizens. And, and that is challenging. Uh, we find that true of a lot of the plans that we work on. You really have to get out there in person, you have to provide online options. Uh, give people an opportunity to sort of, um, uh, interact in a way that's convenient. And, and that may, means that for us, it oftentimes, uh, is, is coming to an event on a weekend, for example, or, uh, early in the morning or, uh, later in the evening. Uh, that's just, uh, the best way that we, we found to be able to get people to interact. So, a real broad range of, of different techniques that we'll be using. And, um, we, we talked about the stakeholder interviews, uh, they've gone great. Uh, we've really tried to focus on a bride, broad range of representation, so it, it's sort of the obvious ones, like the consulting, planners and engineers, to, uh, individual property owners, and then maybe some of those that are not quite so obvious. So talking to, uh, non-profit groups or, um, those that, uh, represent maybe an environmental interest or, uh, a farm and ranch, uh, community. So, it's, it's really intended to be broad, and with this, this first phase, just to get some sense of, there's some common threads, some themes that we should be really focusing on. Um, and then you can see some of the, uh, the, the, uh, public involvement plan outreach tools that we use. We have, uh, uh, a online present, so there are QR codes, you can see them here on these graphics, uh, both their poster form and an information card, so people can go take a, a questionnaire. So if you, uh, then hone in on this QR code, and most of, most of you are familiar with these, uh, takes you to a questionnaire, and it's linked to both the city and a county webpage. So, and this is one of those ways that we, uh, get the word out. Um, if you look at our event schedule, uh, we've focused on these stakeholder interviews, uh, the first couple of months. Uh, we have some more this next week that are scheduled, and then we're going to jump into, uh, a series of what we call pop-up events. So you'll see us at both, uh, the city and the county farmers markets. Uh, as you get into Jubilee Days, you know, you have a series of events that are week-long, uh, even including, uh, the parade will be there. And we really hope to, to, um, get to where everybody is. And it's, it's, you can see some of these, uh, different events, they're, they're varied, and that is all purposeful. Uh, during those events, we're going to be talking to people about their preferences. And then we'll get into, um, kind of turning the crank one more time as we get into, uh, later on in the summer and the early fall, and we start to get some recommendations. And, and then kind of having people weigh in, okay, so we heard you at the beginning, but you had to say what your preferences are. Here are some recommendations, did we get that right? And then lastly, we'll, we'll get into the, uh, the adoption process. So, uh, tonight, I just wanted to, just to pose some questions to you, maybe tell you a little bit about what we've heard. It's been very interesting, again, reflective of, uh, maybe the diverse, uh, viewpoints that you find within, you know, both the city and a county jurisdiction. Uh, maybe some misunderstandings, um, some areas where, uh, we clearly have agreement, others where we have disagreement. So, you know, I'll, I'll give you some examples. Uh, you know, and again, going back to the earlier conversation tonight, where some have expressed that, uh, the county regulations and process is, um, very, um, easy compared to the city, that it is, um, there are, some people said there are basically no rules in the county. Uh, you can go get a variance without any issue in the county. All of those things that I, I imagine would, would, uh, bring a little bit of a smile to your face if you're, uh, a commission member, uh, having gone through the last hour and a half. So you understand, uh, what the perception is. Uh, and then, uh, with the city, you know, there's, there are a lot of comments about, uh, sort of maybe the counter to that would be the, the amount of regulation, the, the length of the process, that sort of thing. And then you, you got to, a, a lot of comments about property rights. And this balance between an individual's right to do whatever they want with their property, and then, um, yes, the community's interests and things, uh, like protecting groundwater or protecting views or, or, you know, whole assortment of public interest that, you know, I think regulations are generally intended to protect. So, it's, it's a, it's, it's been complex. Um, our, our conversations have been really cordial and enjoyable, and we, we have gotten a, a really wide range of views so far. So, here are just some questions to tee up and, uh, start the conversation with you tonight. Uh, we'll be taking notes here, and really curious what you think. Um, and so the first one is sort of a, a, kind of a complex one. And, you know, looking at that, that issue of property rights, um, versus regulation, um, you, what do you think, uh, in this process would, would, uh, result in respecting county residents and businesses the best? You know, are there, uh, there are ways in this process that we can really do a fine job of, um, respecting, um, the rights of those individuals um, and also the rights of the community? So, that's a big one. I'll kind of, you know, open up with that one. And then, you know, there are a series of other ones here, again, just, um, intended to, uh, spur some conversation. We don't have a, you know, a, a detailed, uh, program for you tonight, it's more of a, of a discussion. Well, let me, let me throw out another one, uh, because it, it's been probably, um, the one that's the most difficult to solve. Um, and that is, um, we know that there's going to be regulations as a likely second step in this process. And what do you hope or expect to see with the creation of those regulations? Going back to those conversations of the last, uh, several weeks, uh, I can tell you that it's coming to agreement on the level of regulation is, is going to be a big challenge on this project. When you have, um, such diverse opinions, uh, again, going from the one perspective of, uh, protection of, of all property rights, uh, and basically a very hands-off attitude, uh, versus, um, enacting, uh, more regulations than you have today. So, you know, trying to find that sweet spot is usually challenging, I think that's going to be particularly true, um, in this case. So, I, I'm going to just leave the presentation there, leave up the questions, um, and if, just wanted to, uh, see if any commission members wanted to offer, um, any discussion points.
Yeah, any, any speakers? Go ahead, just hang out. I can't see all the hands, so you, uh, Ms. Hanning and Mr. Stein and Mr. Kennedy, you'll just have to order.
I can see him, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, we, we, lacking that, uh, interesting discussion, uh, Cameron, and, and girl is very closely to, the last item on our agenda, where I was hoping to engage my colleagues in something about zoning resolution. The, the most, well, maybe the only, the, the tool that's available to the county to guide development is zoning. Now, historically, the county has been very reluctant to, to use that tool. Our, our current zoning is based, is, is an inventory, you may have heard that in some of your, of your interviews. I, I don't think that's unfair characterization. We know that our county-wide zoning initially came from exactly that. It was simply, everybody got zoned to match their tax status. And over the years since then, uh, we've updated that inventory periodically as people have come forward, uh, with, with new ideas. But, but rarely, as the county denied an application for a zoning change, and we've been in the last year in a dispute on, on the extent to which the comprehensive plan or the growth area management plan that you're creating can be used to regulate land use. So, uh, I guess my question is as much to my colleagues as to you. How do we feel about telling people that they can do it for their own property? And I could tell you after going to, uh, planning zone meetings for, uh, often on for 20 years, the historical response has been that we cannot, and I've heard those exact words, we can't tell people what to do with their property from multiple commissioners over the years. So what's being suggested here, um, is that, that we do exercise that authority. We simply will do it responsibly and judiciously, but but, uh, yeah, what how do my fellow commissioners feel about exercising the zoning authority that's been given to us by the state to say, this gets to go here, and that gets to go there, and that doesn't get to go over there? Because that's really where you're headed, right, Cameron?
Uh, it is, and, and I, I'd like to, to prompt people by asking the question, um, are there critical issues that really need to be addressed? Is there a problem here that we're trying to solve with the regulations? Because I, I think, you know, what, where people get upset is when they, they feel that the governing body is just overreaching, they're getting into such detail that it really, it, it's not that relevant to, to most people. Uh, when, when we brought this up in one of our interviews, I, I, I'm going to quote one of our interviewees, he said, "It, it's like, um, thinking about, uh, what laws are on the books that we can all agree on, well, murder is one of them." And we agree that, and that's not a, that's something that we should be protecting the, the, our community from, and it's, it's not legal. Uh, and we, when we think about it from the standpoint of land use planning, are there really critical issues that as a community you can agree upon? That there's a, is a valid public interest in regulating something? And, you know, every community is different, and, you know, we, we work throughout the, the whole Rocky Mountain region. Um, I've worked in, um, many different states, and I, I think the approach in every community has got to be different, because it's based on what people really care about. And, you know, we're really at the very beginning stage of this, but, but, you know, it's a tough, very tough question to answer. I think when you're in the West, um, there's a certain, um, amount of independence that, that people enjoy. And, um, and I think it, it, it's a lot of communities that, that we work in, is that they, there's that, um, that self-reliance that people have, and they, they, they feel like, um, they don't want to be so limited. And, but at the same time, maybe there are some issues that really come to the, the, the fore that are significant, that, that people say, well, you know, really, there, there ought to be some way to ensure that we have this particular outcome.
Hi, well, Cameron, I'm Michael Platt, I'm a commissioner here. Uh, I am one of the new commissioners, I started, uh, with, uh, Jeff Tyne at the end of the year. And, uh, you know, I came into this with some amount of thoughts and opinion about this. I think we have a really special place here in Laramie, Albany County. And from the people I am around, we, we value what you see right now. And I also believe that Laramie is destined to grow, yeah, at least at the steady rate it has been growing at for the last, so, so years, with the possibility that growth could take off at some point. I, I look down the front range. You know, if you go down the front range a month later, it's like a whole new cities are almost. Come back to Laramie, you think, wow. And, and you're in Fort Collins, so, you know, you're, you're probably two decades ahead of where we are today here in Laramie, and you've seen so much, and and I, I, I just know that you must have things that you can guide us away from, mistakes have been made, other maybe faster-growing places that we could perhaps take action today to ward off. In the same time, I think it's very important we plan for smart growth. And I believe the city has be given, or should be given, some greater amount of deference to planning ahead, since most of the growth is more, you know, highly likely to occur within this donut area or, or thereabouts. Um, and historically, anecdotally, from what I've seen in the past, there has been a lot of pushback from county residents about city growth plans. Uh, I think it's often been the typical case where you have a very, very vocal minority, very opposed to any change at all, and maybe a silent majority that is kind of content to let things happen. Uh, so I'll just off that as a opening comment.
And I, this is Keith Kennedy, and I, I'd like to follow up on that, and we've talked a lot about the donut. And I think it's worthwhile to remember that because of overreach by the city in the past, that's the reason of much of the legal authority over the donut was taken away from cities. That, the statute that was relied on for well over a century was for disease control, for, for quarantine. And when that was revoked here within the last five or six years, it was as a reaction to the thought that there was overreach by cities into areas where there's a reason that folks live in the county. where there's a reason that folks live in the county too. It's not entirely that they want to, as Mr. Glass said earlier, some of that self-reliance. I guarantee you, it's not necessarily less expensive to have your own well and septic system than, than to rely on municipal services or service districts. But I, I think we also have to be careful that we don't overreach on that as well as we go through this process.
Yeah, I, it's just to put in a pitch for the growth area management plan, and that it is proceeding in a very different context. It isn't the city demanding anything of the county. Ideally, it will proceed in this completely cooperative way because as Mr. Kennedy points out, the city has, has no authority to, to restrict uses outside of the city. But we're hopeful that the city and the county can come to a mutual agreement. There's certainly nothing that, that forbids such agreements. So, yeah, I think we're getting, we're heading in towards those same questions of what's going on around the city, but in a much more cooperative way. I totally appreciate that. As an observer, uncommon like these, I hate regulation of my activity, but I demand regulation of my neighbor's activity. That shows up at the most granular levels and at the grandest levels, and we have to just negotiate that. My sense of it is, and we're, there's four planning efforts going on here. The other one is, is a natural resource management plan, which is being picked around. And I think one of the things that's come out of the comments on that has been the importance of, of environment. And I don't mean that in terms of tree hugging, but just the, the whole configuration of the county with respect to amenities like walking trails and hiking opportunities and hunting and fishing and skiing and so forth. So anything that can come out of this plan that will emphasize the value to those in the community, city and out, that gets at that quality of life, why we live here. I think those are the most important things to come forward with, and the things that are going to be most easily embraced by both the city and the county. As opposed to, to say something more economic development in terms of we want more stores and more traffic. I, I think you'll find this community will address that through, if we could provide a, a healthy and supportive working and recreating environment that, that will itself be supportive of acquiring and retaining quality employees. So my sense of the county is that you'll find a strong emphasis on what we might call quality of life issues rather than raw economic issues. Mara has her hand up. Mara, sorry.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Chair. I know you can't see the screen and thank you, Cameron.
You're down in the corner.
Thank, thank you for the presentation. It's, it's a heavy lift to try to create consensus in a, in a polarized, potentially polarized community. And trying to hone in on the, the values that I, I think probably we all share is probably what you're already doing. But I, whether people want to argue about whether, whether there's too much regulation or overreach, I think everybody can get around our open spaces, our clean air and clean water and the, the wildlife that we're graced by in our, in our neighborhoods. And, and so I, I guess that's one question I have for you is, how is the existing wildlife corridors being looked at in this growth management plan? And is that something that's also being taken into consideration?
Well, fortunately, we have excellent data with respect to where natural features and habitat are within this, this joint growth area. And we'll be mapping all of that as, as part of that analysis. So we're spending a fair amount of time looking at those factors. And it, it goes beyond actually between the, the features sort of above the ground. I will be looking at groundwater, soils, that sort of thing as well. So it's really all of the environmental attributes that you can imagine. You know, again, above ground, below ground, and, and trying to see, we have some common patterns. You know, obviously you've got a river running right through the middle of town. And with that, you've got groundwater that's impacted in terms of its level and location. And you have obviously the flood plain and with those implications in the high hazard areas where you can't build. So, so all of those are being factored in. Another thing that you said was mentioned earlier about quality of life and, and outdoor recreation, which is a front and center, obviously, living in Laramie. That's your, you know, a wonderful place for the access to, to recreation. But even in town, we're hearing this as a common theme, is, you know, what about trails in town? So I, I can tell you, just today, we went and we took all of the trails data that we could find from the city, from the county, from contemplated development plans, and we, we've mapped all of those as a draft. So you'd have sort of a, a starting point to examine. We think about what would a trails network throughout the entire joint growth area look like? And use that just as one example because we were, happened to be working on today. But I, I think there are other attributes, as others have said, it's a high quality of life community. And that's what draws people to Laramie. When we, we meet with folks, they, they express a real love for their community. And, and for large part, you know, they, they feel really content with the, so the natural environment. And, and then they also, I think, you know, people are looking for, you know, economic prosperity balance. I think the housing issue is another one that has come up over and over again. And it's, it's happening throughout high quality of life places throughout the whole country. The front range, you've seen it. It's, you know, wages not keeping up near with what housing prices are doing. It's, it's throughout the region. It's, it's a huge issue. It's, it's a tough one. And I think that's one of those areas that we've heard from everyone that we've met with, that it's a problem that we're trying to solve. And so then how do we do that with the joint growth area? What, where does housing go? What are the different housing types that, that you want to promote and, and provide for? So that's going to be, I, I just, I add that because it's sort of the part of the balance is that, you know, you, you have the natural resources you're trying to protect. And there's, on the other hand, you do need housing. You do need employment opportunities.
Yeah, thanks. I guess to, to follow up on that, it seems like because you're focusing on the one mile radius roughly around the city, that's, that's less likely to inhibit some of our wildlife migration and is the appropriate place to put the density. And I, I just, I support the smart growth as well, like Commissioner Platt mentioned. Because, you know, the city has a stated goal of increasing the population from our roughly 30,000 up to 50,000. And, and if we're not smart about where we put all those people, we're, we're going to be a really messed up community. And, and so I, I guess to the naysayers or people who think it's overreach, I mean, we, we do have authority that's vested in the county commissioners to protect, to promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare of the county. You know, I guess I'm, I'm just struck that if, let's say Wyoming legalized medical marijuana or recreational marijuana, everyone would sure want to see that the locations of those places were regulated and not located next to schools. No one would see that as overreach. They would see that as an appropriate application of the authority vested in the county commissioners to protect morals. And so I, I think people lose track of the fact that we're also trying to protect health and safety with, with groundwater and surface water and air protection. And some of these issues for, for property owners in the donut area, if, if we're not making it more of a, a level playing field between this growth area, like code, for example, then we're not really protecting the general welfare of our citizens either. And so I guess I'm, I'm sort of a proponent for having some amount of pride in our authority vested in us and pointing that out to, to people who, who think it's, you know, I'm sure there's the chance for overreach, but I think what you guys are doing is, is probably not in the neighborhood of overreach. Thanks.
Okay, Cameron, yesterday, David and Joe were gracious enough to give me some time with them to give me a little bit of an overview of what you're doing. And I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask you anyway. Is part of your charge to go through our zoning resolution to provide specific recommendations and language where it needs to be strengthened to enable this joint intergovernment agreement to go forward?
Yes, that is part of the project scope. We will be looking at the county's regulations and I think also the city's regulations and trying to understand where do we have commonality? I, I think getting back to Morris' comments here just a second ago. You know, how do we kind of level the playing field, using that term? Is, is, you know, and there's different ways that communities handle this, where, where you have this interface between county and city and urban and rural. And, and there's lots of different ways you can do it. I don't think we have an answer yet. But, but definitely looking at the regs. And I think with the processes as well, sometimes what you find is that when people object to regulations, what you, what, what they end up really saying is they don't like the, the way the process works. Whether there's a process in the city or the process in the county. And maybe there's some ways to, to streamline either individually how the city or county operates or how the, the two entities work with each other. So we'll look at, at all of those things. But the, the regs, you know, that, that's the, the part that we definitely will be examining. And it's just, again, likely to be one of the biggest challenges that we'll have.
Thanks for that. And do you anticipate a, kind of a buffet there of, as between, say, kind of aspirational educational approaches and more explicitly regulatory? Is that, is that a useful way to, to wade into that, or is that just accused issue?
No, I, I think so. I mean, I, you know, there's, there's the heavy hand of the law and a lot of people just, that it's just not appealing to them. So are there other ways through, through policy, things like guidelines to incentivize people to do, you know, basically build a community that, that at the end of the day, people really like without, again, just, just hitting, hitting over the head with regulations? And it's always a challenge and it takes people being cooperative to do that. But yeah, there's some techniques that we're going to consider beyond regulation.
I suspect that there, there are a lot of elements of shared vision between residents of the community. And I, I would keep using our community. It doesn't stop at the, the city boundary. Much of the rural population of Albany County is explicitly part of the Laramie community. Work here, shop here, recreate here. So that, I guess that's your challenge is to capture the, the common elements of that vision. But I'm guessing that there really are a lot of them. And then, and then how does one implement those? And how does one bring the stragglers on board? But I think we'll find more commonality that, that are to make, I hope. Cameron.
I was going to say, I just have to say so far that, you know, I think there's some commonality in, in the comments that we've got. You know, there, there are certain areas where their views are really divergent. But in others, when you, we speak with folks even a little bit longer, kind of tease out some responses from them, you find that, that they're not that far apart.
Cam, Cameron, do you mind if I follow up? Your word incentivize just got me thinking. So like this plan can lay out where the best places are for development. But then, you know, how do you lead a property owner of, say, a large area to be willing to subdivide that land? Especially if, you know, you're, you're more likely looking at needing possibly sewer and water hookups in, in the infrastructure. And is there any way to incentivize or are you looking at forms of incentivization over capital, capital costs of these projects?
Well, you know, I think for a lot of developers, I mean, just like all of us, it gets down to dollars and cents. And it's not that they, they don't want to do something, it's that they can't afford it. And I think we need to be smart enough to, to imagine what it's like being in their shoes and saying, all right, I've got this 10 acre parcel of land, for example, and I want to put, bring sewer service to it. I don't want to do septic. Are there, you know, are there ways through the, the, the density that's permitted, for example? Or the, the size of the rights away being, they're being dedicated? Or some, some means to say, okay, it's good, as, as a developer, it's going to be easier for me with these things in place, this zoning, these regulations in place, to actually recover my costs so that I can put in that sewer? And I can put in that road that meets a standard that we can agree on and do it in a financially feasible way. You know, I, I've, I, I know that a lot of developers are perceived as, as the, the folks in the black hats. But actually, you know, they build community too. And we, you know, I, we all need to, to be respectful that they are the ones taking risk and, and putting money down. But, but it also, at the same time, that, you know, the, the community is expecting a certain outcome, a certain way that the town is going to grow. And so there's got to be an understanding between what the public and the private sector about how each one of them operates and doing it in a way that's financially feasible. And that's one of the reasons why we do these physical impact analyses with a plan like this. Rather than just saying, oh yeah, we're going to, we're going to, you know, upzone this area and downzone that area, we're going to change the regulations. It's more like, well, what are the implications of doing that? For both the county, the city, for developers, what, what's going to, and property owners, how's it going to impact them? So that they can make it viable. And I think with the, you know, I was going to stop in just a second here, but on the housing piece, that's the one that, it, it's a tough nut to crack because, you know, you talk to the developers and, you know, they're grappling with increased costs for material, increased costs for labor, increased costs, it seems like everything these days. And how can they, they, they make a product that, that people can afford and still sort of match all of the costs that they have? So it's not that they, you know, necessarily don't, that they don't want to provide attainable housing. It's, it's a challenge. So I think we have to be mindful of that all the way through the process.
Cameron, as time you've been here so far, has anything jumped out or have any things jumped out as concerns or problem areas with our larger community here?
You know, I, I would, you know, again, I'm going to go, go back to, you know, this notion of balancing between property rights and, and regulation. You know, there, there's such varied opinions about what that's right spot is. That, that's going to be, it's going to be really tough. The other part of this, and it's, it's been more pronounced, and I, I guess I even thought walking into this, was how infrastructure is really going to drive so much of your decision-making. And, you know, between, it, it just, one example that, that came up a few times, and most of you are, are familiar with this, where, you know, you had industrial development where it turned out that you didn't have enough electric service. And, you know, that's a, that's a, it was a huge impact. Or, you know, areas where providing water water and sewer from a topography standpoint is very challenging. So all of those, those utility infrastructure pieces are really, they're going to be costly and difficult in many cases. And that's where we need to understand like, what's the physical footprint going to be in an area? How expensive is it going to be to extend those services? And then how do you, how do you pay for it? And then what's the public's appetite to pay for it? So it's, it's, the utility components is very complex.
Well, the utility component, two approaches to planning, one is to to be ready for whatever happens, and the other is to try to guide what happens. So by the choice of where the city chooses where it extends utilities, that then promotes development in those areas. So there's kind of a chicken egg thing between development and utilities that that I would like to see the, the planning aspect of it, look at utilities of where do we want to encourage growth? I guess that gets to your incentivizing and de-incentivizing. So we can use infrastructure as a very important tool in guiding that development.
Yep, I, you know, infrastructure is just going to play a huge role in your future development. And like a lot of communities that we find in the western region where you have this this interface, sort of the edge of town, I mean, the more rural and the more urban. It's, it's really putting in those utilities and the cost to do so. And this cost just keep going up. And it's just like the, the easier areas oftentimes get developed first, which leads you to the challenging ones. And I think you have a little bit of that going on.
So looking forward, what's the timeline now? The next step will be to go up soliciting public input from meetings and so forth, and we will.
That's exactly right. Yep. So we'll, we'll finish up our stakeholder interviews this next week. We'll have these series of pop up events that will be starting. You know, it'll be the late June, July timeframe, get into August. And you'll see us a lot out there in the community. And we hope to be driving a lot of people to the webpage so that they can kind of weigh in. As we get more information, we'll be posting on there so people can say, yeah, I understand that issue, or I have a preference. So those are, you know, all of the, the ways we'll be getting out there. And I just wanted to make a plea to you all. You know, this is one of those, because it's on a sort of a short fuse, particularly as we get into the next month. For you all to do, talk it up with your family and friends. We find that word of mouth is the most powerful tool. We can advertise, you know, all over the place, but if somebody like yourselves can recommend that somebody attend, say, an event or go onto the website and make a comment, that's going to be a lot more powerful. So that's our plea to you. And again, I wanted to thank you for your, your time tonight. We're really enjoying working in Laramie. And again, you'll be seeing us a lot more.
There are parts of Fort Collins that we all wish we had, climate's probably the top of the list, and others that we're glad we don't.
Yep, yeah, I can fully understand that. Yeah, you ever want to talk about Fort Collins? I know a fair amount about it, so.
Just a quick comment, Cameron, as someone who tried to help my Girl Scout daughter get people to do things online at Farmer's Market, it helped if we had our own tablets present and got them to just like go to the website right in front of us. And and do stuff, because we were giving out QR codes and things like that. And what we found was most successful is if we could just hand them iPad and have it right there in front of us.
Thank you for that comment. We have done that in other events and agree that is a very successful way to do it. People can just jump on right there and, and like take a questionnaire or go to the website. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Comments? Thank you. I think this is an exciting project. We're anxious to see the results. Good stuff. Other comments? We done? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Right back to our agenda, a couple of just short things. Do we need a break or are you ready? Keep rolling? Let's be any of those soon, because you can take a break whenever you want. Okay, the natural resource management plan, what's going on with that, David?
Um, so where we're at is we went to the Board of County Commissioners with another draft natural resource management plan. Received a little more comments. We took it back to the steering committee. We received a few more comments. We're kind of finalizing a draft to go out to the public comment, for public comment. So that should be, we're hoping to have that out done by Monday. And then there'll obviously be opportunities for everybody to make additional comments on that. So yeah, that's, that's kind of where we're at. We're scheduling some public meetings. At least one in Laramie, one in Centennial at this point. Probably the end of May and the first, I think, 31st versus what we're looking at for public meetings. Laramie and Centennial respectively. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I think that the draft we've got is was much more palatable after they made some significant changes to that, removed the legal section and put that to the to the, as an appendix, which, I mean, there was some discussion with the commissioners whether they even want that or not. So we'll put it in the appendix and then the board will make the decision whether they keep it or not. Yeah, that's kind of where that's at. Is there any questions that you guys have for me on that?
So are you suggesting that the 30 day clock starts by then?
Yes.
That's okay. Try to hold to a pretty tight schedule.
Yes, yes. Our funding from the state has to be, we have to be done spending money by June. From the end of June, it's, June 30, I believe. So, so yeah. So it will be adopted by that time, I don't think, but we should have a pretty good draft to take to the Board of County Commissioners. And then if they still need to be tweaks, the tweaks, but we just will do that on our, you know, on staff time, not, not.
Well, I give a shout out to the steering committee, Ms. Hanning's on that. They must have done a tremendous amount of work. I stepped away from it after we came to us, and I just think it's a vastly improved document organizationally and content tone.
Yes.
So, yeah, good, good work, staff and steering committee to give us something that I think we can all embrace.
Yeah, well, and one thing I just want to point out, just, I just felt like it was really good talk to the federal agencies. Joe was with them when they talked to the Bureau of Land Management, and I was able to talk to Frank Romero at the Forestry Service. And it was, it was just kind of like, you know, we can use this to work together on a lot of things. And Frank brought out some real good, good things that he needs our help with, you know? So I just thought that was, I don't know, I really liked that, just sitting down with them and and we can use this plan as a cooperating tool and not just for the county's benefit. Or not just for the foresters' benefit, but we can work together and benefit each other, you know? So, I don't know, just want to pass.
Yeah, well, I, some of us, just the initial tone and that part of that's because we were using a template from some some more Bella Coast counties was, was, you have to let us. And then I, my discussions with you and others that were involved felt like, no, what we're really trying to say here is, is let's cooperate. We have a lot of common interests here and the county wants to be part of, wants to be at the table. I thought the introduction just reads so much better.
Yeah.
And more, more welcoming and cooperative. So good stuff.
Yeah, sure.
Questions for anybody else? And we will see that show up on the county website. What's, where do we?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll get down to the county website, probably Monday.
Monday, okay. I encourage everybody to give it a look. It's a good document. It's got a lot of material in it, but it's moving in the right direction.
Yep. If nothing else on that, I'll move on to the next.
Okay, where are we on the gas rock protection plan?
Please. So, so yeah, so we are still, a lot of this is just consultant work. Right now, we're figuring out the public pro, or the public input type kind of things. I believe we're going to use some stakeholder meetings similar to the growth period management plan. You know, I'm not sure where you guys are going to come into play on this. I'm actually advocating for, you know, them to come sooner rather than later. And then get some initial thoughts and then possibly come back. I mean, and then we will come back at the end because it'll have to go through this body. So, so those are discussions that, that actually, the steering committee is gonna make the decision on, or the intergovernmental committee on how we go forward with that. But but that's kind of where we're at is how are we going to go for and how are we going to get this out to the public? They came up with a pretty good delineation of the western boundary, which, which I love what they've done. They've taken data and information about what we know about the 75 foot of Satenka. And, and really, they came up with where they thought that was, and then they used the survey boundaries and, you know, township range section. Those boundaries that we can actually find on the ground if we had to. So I myself am very pleased with, with what they're working on and how that's coming out, especially that western boundary. The rest of the document, we really haven't seen yet, but they're working on those things. But we should have a draft soon, I think. So.
Will that western boundary be on parcel lines or will it be on like a range and township line or?
I will, survey, surveyable lines, yes. Yeah, so it could be both. Yeah, it'll be, yeah, like, if there's like a huge big parcel, you know, we might follow a section line or a quarter section line. But yeah, it'll follow that. Just, they've delineated kind of, they've got well data, they took the well data from the state engineer's office. It goes down that line and shows where the estimated 75, you know, Satenka is. They drew that line in and then they went and they put in, you know, followed the the survey lines to kind of come up with that. And it's just kind of interesting because like, you know, there's some areas where it's like, we've been using this, this line that we've had forever that was kind of done by a different method. But some of it's really close to where that line was. But then there's other parts where it's like, it's not really close to where that line is. So it's been kind of interesting to see the progress through, that they've made through this, like this data and then analyzing it. And will they incorporate some extra little bit of zone? You know, it was like, yeah, yeah. It's not going to be like right on the line. They're incorporating a little bit more just to follow, you know? Where they might, they might feel like, even though, well, it says 75 feet there, it might go out a little bit farther than. I think they're taking into other factors that, that I can't really explain some. Anyways.
I know they've, they've combed the literature and I mean, I've sent bunches of stuff that they're at the center, just, just reports and maps, things that have come out the last 20 years. I, I, I've been feeling like they're heading in the right direction. And that survey lines to address this class comment, that was one of the things that was changed in the, in the most recent update of the AP Oz in the November was to get away from this just line that wandered off through the countryside to something you could actually force. And I know, I know Skirch was all, you betcha. Because it's, it's kind of hard to have a zone that's defined by just a line on a map that, well, as you know, the line could be 300 feet thick, so depending on scale. So that will come, the process will be kind of two pieces like it has in the past where there will be a plan approved and then a set of regulations derivative from the plan.
Yes, so that's, that's the plan, yeah. So we'll. That's the plan of the plan.
Plan of the plan, two pieces?
Yeah.
Yep. End of summer, or what do you? What's, what's the schedule for completion of that?
Um, so I think there, the, the plan is, the last that I looked at is like September-ish, they start going through the public process for approval. So, yeah, so early fall is kind of what they're, they're projecting right now, so.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing was the zoning resolution. Our meetings always get long, even though I think they're short. But I would like us to take maybe 10 minutes or here, just to, to share with you some of the thinking that I've done and talking to Matt to, to, and to David, if that's acceptable. We kind of kick these large issues down to the end of our agenda. I've been in segues very, very smoothly from what Cameron was sharing with us. And it goes to that first point I made is what, what, what do we want to do with zoning? We are the planning and zoning commission. And, and yet, historically, we haven't done a great deal of our zoning has been more of a, so say, an inventory rather than something that looks forward and captures a a notion of where we want the county to go, with the exception of the, of the bar protection line. There's a case where we did the plan. And then there were regulations that implemented the plan. That's kind of how it's supposed to work. We're supposed to have a, get good planning and jump in here, David, if I playing junior planner. But you know, when you use plan, then you have zoning to implement that plan. And then you reviewed a development proposals under the criteria of the zoning to see if they work or not. And then even the next step would be a zoning certificate to actually build the physical thing. So we have defined zones and we have specific rules for what you can't, can't do within each of those zones. And then, and development standards, that's probably the most significant thing we do in terms of regulating development in the county is hold people to high standards. Road widths, setbacks and so forth. And the, and the state statute in the court cases that we've explored over the last year have made it very clear that with respect to proposals, proposals for physical development, we have to stay within the parameters of the zoning rules. That's, that's been made clear. If someone comes to us with a specific physical development, like I want to build a gas station, we can't go back and comp plan. But I'm using the word physical development specifically because that's within the state statute. What, what, there's that step between the planning and the zoning that is the one that I think we've been tussling with. And I would argue that isn't the one that's been addressed by the changes in state statute. Right now, we are, we the county, all counties are authorized to provide planning leading to zoning and in the best interests of the, what, health, safety, welfare and morals of the county. And that's really our authority to do something at all. So I guess, as I would articulate the issue, and it sounded to me in our discussions that, yes, we want, we, as representatives of the county, want to be able to bring the comp plans. There are three of them now. The comprehensive plan, the gas rock protection plan, the coming soon, the growth intervention plan. We would like to be able to use those to create ourselves. We had this discussion back in October or something, and we were, we suggested that we needed to modify our zoning regulations to decouple them from the comp plan. I think Ms. Hanning stated it very well, is before we do that, how are we going to alternatively couple them together? There are ways to do that, that, that maintain fidelity to the, to state law. So it really gets to what we were just discussing. To what extent do we, we as a representative of the county want to use zoning to guide development rather than simply recognizing development as it occurs on the ground? And there's, and there's a couple of ways that we can do that. And again, I'm just kind of throwing these out as ideas that are kicking around and be happy to have anybody weigh in. We, we can do that incrementally as petitions come forward. If we zone the county just as an inventory, what's your tax status? That's your zone. So there was no sense of, we want to have this happening here and we want that to be happening. So there was no sense of, we want to have this happening here and we want that to be happening over there. So that's, that's where the planning was lost. But okay, that's fine. I mean, that, that was a conscious decision that we are not going to be prescriptive about what happens where. So where we are right now is we are slowly modifying that inventory on a one by one basis as people come forward and we make decisions on zoning changes. It's been suggested, let's just call those map amendments and we'll leave it to our always competent legal staff to use the right words. The concept here would be that, that do we want to move forward with a procedure for map amendments that provide us the opportunity to look back at those planning documents? I'm thinking the answer is yes, but there's five of us and we need to, to set that policy direction. So, all right, let's just, let's just start there. Any, any just off the top thoughts on, am I right to think that we want to be able to bring the planning documents to bear on our changes in the zoning map?
Oh, I was one of that.
Please.
And, and I think in general, that is a good principle. I also get very positive about this process that, it's just, you know, it was yesterday. The Cameron and his group are doing, and if we end up with a sound intergovernmental agreement with the county and city that's going to help dictate, not dictate, that's not the right word. Anyway, a plan for this most highest priority area growth around Larrabee, that was in the county. That's going to put us a big, big step forward. I'm sure it's going to help you guys a whole lot. It's going to help the city a whole lot. And that's the most urgent need in my view. That's where most of this stuff's at. And to me, that, that implies we should let these folks do their job and see what develops out of that, including, that's why I asked specific language we need to rec, you know, change and incorporate to our zoning resolution to, you know, enable us to work.
No, and the, the first reaction to these discussions for both Matt and David was, I hope you don't think we're going to do this next week.
Yeah.
So they'll totally agree with that and, and why I'm throwing this out of discussions.
The other thing I asked of David yesterday, I may be putting words in his mouth, but you could correct me, is are there things that he knows about right now? You know, deficiencies or flaws or things that should be improved in the zoning resolution that we should be doing? And David's answer was, again, you're, you correct me. He's got a hell of a lot to take care of right now. So yes, are things, but it'd be good to get worked through some of these other big things and, you know, address that later on. Is that right, David?
Yeah, I don't know if he's the same terminology, but yeah.
I think he said hell of a lot.
Are we agreed on the direction we're going and we can worry about the timeline later?
I'm sure these other commissioners have some things to say, hopefully. Okay, Mara's smiling. She must have something to say.
Comments? Go ahead. It's kind of extending this growth area management plan to the whole county. Is that, is that something we want to do?
Well, so it, the, how you, how you phase the order of things. I, I feel a little bit like the list of things that Cameron talked about that he was looking at is probably not too different from what was looked at in the comprehensive plan. You know, sensitive, sensitive areas, you know, the, the same things were looked at and I, I have to believe that the growth management plan and the comprehensive plan are probably not going to be too divergent on some of these priority growth areas. And maybe, I mean, of course, Matt is up to his eyes in work right now, but I, I really liked his idea of putting in the, um, the priority growth areas as overlay zones. I thought that was a good way to capture the, the vision for growth into the zoning resolution. And maybe that can be moving forward, uh, notwithstanding all the other work Matt's doing. So he may say no. But it may be some of that work can be moving forward in the details over the boundaries of some of these priority growth areas could be worked out as we're getting this other information. But I, I'd sort of hate to be stagnant on dealing with this problem that we're, we're not allowed to look at the comprehensive plan in making decisions. Thanks.
Yeah, um, thanks, uh, Ms. Hanning. Um, I agree with you that hopefully this, uh, out of this joint, um, growth agreement, there will be some actual regulatory language that we could then implement. And I imagine that that timeline won't be, uh, any quicker, um, than what I would be able to do. Cause I still have another four weeks of pretty much just litigation. So, but you know, I think as Burn said, this is something I've been thinking about for, uh, quite a bit. The trick is we just, we really need to divorce the contemplated development from the zoning designation itself. Um, under nine, eight, three oh one F.
I, I, I think that divorce is a good word there to separate those two and, and it's that, that discussed. Even though we don't say that, we always are saying, we will approve a zoning change so that you can build another house or so you could let mama live down the road. That's, and that's incorrect. We're combining the step one, which is the zone with step two, which is what are the rules within that zone? How do you want to proceed? I, I think the best example of that was what we did last year where it was a guy out in the middle of Big Hollow who wanted to, he didn't like the house. It was on his forty-lane plot. He wanted to build another one. So we wanted to split it in two. Well, planning staff thought long and hard. The only way to do that is to rezone the forty as rural residential. So we weren't, and subsequently that went forward. The county didn't say, oh yeah, it's okay with us if you build another house. What we said was, it's okay with us if you build an eight plot subdivision, the seven of being only two acres. And had it been cast that way, I think the decision would have been a little bit different. So, so that's the very important separation. And that speaks to these court cases and the changes in state law. They are about specific developments within the envelope of zoning. They're not about how do you get to zoning in the first place, which is governed by that authority, which is quite broad. Safety, health, morals and, and, uh, got an apple pie. So I think we can, we can make our zoning regulations compatible with those court cases and state law. At the same time, I think we want to provide an orderly way for people to ask for a, a map amendment. And, and that's some of the other criteria that are, so. So again, we're just looking for general direction here, but hearing no objections, I think that's consistent with what we've been thinking here before. One other, go ahead. So yeah, I, I would like to talk about the other way we could do this.
Well, I am, Ms. Hanning, something I didn't address in, uh, in your comments was, you know, if you look at the priority growth areas, there are a lot more zones that we don't have. Just things that are kind of split out, you know, maybe in between small lot residential and urban residential. So that's also something that we, we can look at, um, in this whole process as well.
Additional zones.
Yeah.
Because basically you could bring the PGAs into zoning. They would look like, okay, here's a, here's a footprint and here's what can happen within that footprint. So whether it's an overlay or just a, another zone, I don't know.
Or a rezoning.
Or a rezoning. That probably looks about the same. So the, the other thought, if there's that kind of incremental approach, if you'd like to find a way to make that work for us as ideas go forward, it is more global stuff. That would be like bringing the growth area plans into the zoning. Right now, those of you who've looked at the zoning maps, and I think it's a very common question, you're looking at a sea of green for ag and then here's a little spots of, of yellow scattered around. Well, well, those weren't the result of anybody saying, well, that'd be a great place for rural residential. Those are simply that the inventory aspect, there was a piece of ground out there that had a house on it. There's less than thirty-five acres. So bang, it got zoned, rural residential. So we could go through and sweep those up and it would become non-conforming, but that's no, that's no imposition on the landlord. Because what I think we really, we, the county really meant was simply to acknowledge that there's a house there and the parcel's less than thirty-five acres. That could still be zoned ag if you want to say, we would like that to be part of this, of this open landscape that our comp plan had visions. So again, there, there, that would be a more global way to, to wade into Albany County zoning. And, and then, and then you would have situations like Ms. Elmer who came to us last month. It seems to me that that shouldn't have been necessary. That, that was an obvious place for a commercial zone. And so she, she shouldn't have had to ask, if we were to take the comp plan and say, where do we want commercial zones? Where do we want ag zones? Where do we want rural residential zones? It would be a necessary help situation like that. So we wouldn't have to do it piece by piece by piece. So what that would look like is a zoning map of Albany County that was, that was much more of a, of a plan than an inventory. Reactions to that thought, any, any sympathy for going back and cleaning up some of those things that were just relics of the size of the lot?
You could do that. It could be a lot of work. And if it's working right now, if you had a bunch of extra resources, just decide, yeah, let's do it. You could do it, but unless there's some critical problem right now that, you know, it says we need to do it, uh, maybe it's not the highest priority thing to focus the attention on.
May I, Mr. Chair? Yeah, and a, and a comprehensive rezoning of the county, um, it's legal, but it will open us up to a lot of challenges.
So just to keep it.
Yeah, like I said, I'm thinking, is there some low hanging fruit there that we could, because right now, say I'm a person that lives out there in the eastern Rock River someplace and I'm sitting on a thirty-five acre plot. Just because it happened, or thirty-four acres, some zone rural residential. Do I want to preserve my ability to subdivide? Because right now, if I come in with a, with a rural residential subdivision, you, we have to give it to you, right? That's, this is all that way. That's what the rules say. So I'm thinking that there may be a, a whole tranche of, of zones out there that there would be no objection to. That these people would be happy to be recognized as out in the middle of an ag zone. They still quite have a big enough.
Certain enough plot.
But then those that are left with non-conforming uses will.
Well, in my case, that would be a non-conforming lot size.
Certain way, looking to Mr. Burridge, right?
Yeah, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't lead to non-conforming uses.
Right. I mean, it could.
Well.
If you're, if you have a commercial use, you can rezon.
Well, yeah, yeah. I, I guess we're talking ag and residential. Like, ag, you can pretty much do any of the, I mean, you could do a residential use. You can have a house on, on ag property or whatever.
Yeah.
Commercial, yes, absolutely.
Agree. So, or, or, or commercial, I mean, that to, to speak to Mr. Plats' objection. It would, it would be more orderly and wouldn't be controversial and would spare us work if we were to say all that area around Mountain Cement, the, and the, the industrial operations out there is hereby zoned commercial.
Yeah, no, I wasn't objecting. I was just pointing out, you know, some of the history has to do that. And is there manpower to do that right now? And is there a need to do, yeah, does that take, you know, it's definitely that's going to be that.
Strike the right now and say.
But eventually.
But, but there is an advantage too. It, it means less work down the road. I, I don't disagree. Okay. Others, comments?
Yeah, I, I'd just say that, I mean, I think a good time to look at some of this, especially around the city, was that it would be after, um, we get this project down, the growth area project. Uh, because that should give us some, some idea of what zoning should be around the city, you know? With all the changes. I mean, the one thing about our, our comp plan is like, it's kind of antiquated. Just in the fact is, it's getting older. Um, now, now, you know, some of the, the prior growth areas out in the county, I don't know if there's been a lot of growth out there, so maybe that stuff isn't as antiquated, you know? When we're looking outside of this, you know, closer area to the city. And, and that's where I think, once we get this, this growth plan, we could use that coupled with our actual comp plan and, and probably come up with, with some, you know, some semblance of what you're, you're, you're talking about and, and really do some, um, zoning as a planning tool instead of zoning per what it's being taxed as.
Okay. Burnout also.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some observations and some of the new guy. And, and don't appreciate all the nuances. You know, one comment was, what, what do we need to do versus what it'd be nice to do? I, I really think that a couple of things I've learned. This grows plan sounds real nice. No one had asked us to change anything in that donut with exception or two. So, so you guys think all the growth is going to come in the donuts? What I see is all the growth is coming outside the donut. That's what we're asked. We're asked to change lots to make these little subdivisions. And so that's a problem. You guys don't have a real handle on that. They bring us things and we can't say no unless there's, you know, a really substantial reason. And like tonight, I found it very frustrating. It's water. Everybody, ninety percent of people in the county live in the city. And everybody gets their water from the same place, basically. And, and yet, we can't deal with that. So that's an observation. And, and I don't know what the answer is. But I am a county resident. I don't like the government telling me what to do, but I'm crossing over that line on water. And so for the next two and a half years, you guys are going to hear that from me a lot. And it goes to Mara's point, you know? When you put in a pot shop, you know, I don't want it next to a school. I don't, I don't, I don't know where exactly you put it, but that seems to me like we'd have something to say about that. And we, most people would support us. Another point is Commissioner Kennedy's point, you know, that there's been this long friction between the city and the county. And the county people go at, hey, you can't tell us what to do and everything. But they are, uh, in certain locations like that where I live and Sherman Hill, we have impacted the city. We have impacted all the residents by not paying attention to our septic. And that's where the nitrate problem comes from. And those kind of problems affect a lot of people. They affect growth. It affects the ability to grow. Um, I would, you know, say to, um, and ask Mr. Gersh for instance, where is the city's septic system capacity? Can we just add all these things and extend out into the donut? And, and, you know, offer them those services? I don't think so. Not without a major bond issue and expanding the capacity. So I, I just get this feeling that we're sticking Band-Aids on all over the place. And if this, um, growth plan, or these sets of growth plans that we're talking about, natural resources plan, that's going to be, offer us an opportunity to overreach. I, I would support that, understanding that there's going to be a lot of pushback from individuals. And I think the time to, to help the county attorney with that pushback is now is to think about what's the legitimate pushback? Let's, let's, you know, weigh in on this. And then the other part of me is, um, it's so, so much easier to do what we did tonight. And just say, hey, you know, we'll push that off, you know, even though the obvious outcome is pretty soon you're not going to be able to put in subdivisions because you're not going to meet the water quality standards. Even that particular model that DEQ uses and the, uh, type of calculation they do, the non cumulative calculation and always holding basically just green lighting everything without the least consideration for the fact it is going to be cumulative effect. All these effects are going to be cumulative. And if, uh, these surveys are right and, you know, very interesting to see the outcome of all these surveys, people do care about the same things. It's just not put forward in a way that facilitates the fact. the fact that we all live in the county. It's ninety percent of us live in that city environment. City's a bit of a stretch if you're comparing this to four comps. Um, but I understand legally. So I'm just looking forward to the next two and a half years of supporting the staff. And I think that, I'm not going to ask Mr. Gersh to comment. But I would believe that the staff would find it much easier with a solid framework in place instead of always putting Band-Aids and patches and trying to maneuver around like the chairman's thirty-four acre example. You know, we're always seems to be like we're maneuvering around. And, and, you know, I, that's just, uh, kind of some observations from the new guy. But the, the last observation I'll offer is I was here a long time ago when I did my PhD at UW. And the population hasn't gone up much. Two thousand people in twenty-five years. So this plan for fifty thousand and all that, and the comments about, well, we've watched the front range grow and all that. I don't think that's an applicable analog to what we face here in Albany County. I think applicable analog is to look at what's happened in the last twenty years, the problems that have cropped up. Aquifer problem and nitrate, you know, being a big one. And, and look ahead to, um, how are we going to deal with those problems? That low hanging fruit that Burn talks about? This idea that these are things that, that are low hanging, that we can deal with. And maybe oftentimes we get trapped in, we've only got these tools legally. And, and I, I'm not advocating that we exceed those boundaries, but can we help that process? I think these, these comprehensive plans are, and then making the zoning come into compliance with those, uh, as much as possible, especially in future development is a key ability that we have on planning and zoning and not adding to anybody's work because I know how busy everybody is. Um, but I just think that that would be a great accomplishment in the next year or two, to, to, to kind of fuse this stuff together and have a forward looking plan that brings together the overall plan and zoning is the way that we can potentially help that forward. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Others? And as, as I said to, to three of Mr. Gealdi saw that I, but David was saying, what do you, what do you want this by? You know, a million years here and there, that's all the same. I don't know, we're going to quite give it that broad a license. But no, I didn't, no one's expecting this to happen tomorrow. All right. Other thoughts? Thank you for, for that. Fine. That's, that's what I was looking for is just some kind of feedback. Where do we think we're headed, you know, in a large sense? No further thoughts? And that brings us to Commissioner comments, which I guess what we've been indulging in for the last most of an hour. Our next meeting is scheduled June eighth, five o'clock. Does that work for everyone?
I'd just like to ask Matt a question. Oh, he goes, a, a quick update on what's likely to happen with the stuff that with this people pertain to windmills.
Oh, um, yes, so we got a notice of appeal to the Supreme Court. My understanding, and I could be wrong on this because I have not dealt with any Supreme Court issues, but since they already appealed once, the Supreme Court does have discretion, uh, if they will take on the appeal or not. It's very like, I, we think that it's likely that it will end up going forward, um, just because it's a bigger wind project. There's certain controversy about it. So, uh, we don't know anything yet as far as briefing schedules or even what, um, the landowners and Monahan farms are going to be arguing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the meeting date is acceptable. We will put that up the calendar, June eighth, five o'clock, same time, same place. We'll continue to offer Zoom options, yes? Okay, see no objection. We have no sentences left. We've worn them down. That brings us to adjournment, which I think that the chair can do absent objections. So if I see none, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your patience.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thanks, you all.